Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission to order. It's our October 16th, 2019 meeting. If we'd all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in itself.
And at this point, I'd like to introduce the members of the commission that are here this evening. To my far right is Jamie Hine, who is an alternate on the commission. Next to Jamie is Jeff Cohen, a commission member. And to my immediate right is James Fitzsimmons, also a commission member. At the staff table to the left is, and I'd like to welcome her, it's Cheryl Ann Tubby. She is our new recording secretary for the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, welcome Cheryl. We look forward for many years of your service to the commission. And next to Cheryl Ann is Casey Hand, our town planner. And I'm Jim Sykter, the chairperson of the commission. Our next order of business is approval of our minutes of September 9th, 2019. Do I have a motion to approve, or any commission members that would like to make some corrections to the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion there where you approve the minutes from the September meeting?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Fitzsimmons, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? Moving on, before we get to our first order of business, which is going to be a public hearing, I'd like to make an announcement. There's one item on our agenda that will not be heard this evening. It's old business item number 11. It's a site plan addition to existing Dunkin' Donuts for M. Rocha at 682 South Colony Road. That application, the applicant has requested that it not be heard this evening, and I suspect it'll be heard at our November meeting. With that, it brings us to our first item on the agenda, which is a public hearing. It's a special permit for daycare facility for Ortega KLA schools at 3 Technology Drive. And if you would, Mr. Fitzsimmons, would you please note all correspondence for the record while the applicant's getting ready to make their presentation?
Legal notice, the following public hearing will be heard at the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission's meeting of Wednesday, September, October 16th, 2019, at 7:00 PM, in the Robert F. Parisi Council Chambers of Town Hall, 45 South Main Street, number one, application 405-19, special permit, trip generation for Ortega/KLA schools to construct an addition of 6,458 square feet to an existing daycare facility at 3 Technology Drive. Correspondence was received by the town planner from Tiffany Shipman, Wallingford Department of Engineering. Correspondence was received from the Firm of Giuliano Associates, addressed to Mrs. Casey Hand, the town planner, September 9th, 2019. We also received a copy of an attachment, something that'll be distributed to all Creative Beginnings families. We also, a letter was sent from the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission to Christopher Giuliano at Giuliano Associates on October 1st, 2019. A letter was sent July 19th, 2019, to Jose Ortega, KLA Schools, from the Wallingford Office of Town Planner. A letter was received from Giuliano Associates on July 31st, 2019. An additional memo was received from the Department of Engineering on August 29th, 2019. Another letter was received from Giuliano Associates on August 6th, 2019, addressed to the town planner. On April 29th of this year, an inter-office memorandum was sent to Aaron O'Hare, Wallingford's environmental planner, from Eric Kruger, senior engineer, Wallingford Water and Sewer. We also have an interdepartmental referral, signed by the Office of the Fire Marshal, dated 7/6/19. We also have our own memo from Eric Kruger, Wallingford Senior Engineer, Water and Sewer, dated July 26th, 2019, addressed to Casey Hand, town planner. We also have several Google Earth attachments dated August 6th, 2019. We also have received a memorandum from Aaron O'Hare, Wallingford's environmental planner, addressed to Casey Hand, Wallingford's town planner, dated July 19th, 2019. We received a letter this month from Giuliano Associates, October 3rd, 2019, addressed to the town planner. We also have a copy of a memorandum from the environmental planner, dated 10/7/19. We also received a memo last week from the Department of Engineering, addressed to the Planning and Zoning Commission, from Rob Balchamides, Department of Engineering. And we also received a memo from the Wallingford Health Department on October 4th, 2019, addressed to the Town Planning Office. On October 9th, we received a copy of a letter addressed to Casey Hand, town planner, from Giuliano Associates. We also have, I believe, our last piece of correspondence is a memo from the Office of the Fire Marshal, received October 8th, 2019. That's all, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. And at this point in time, if the applicant would, and his or her representative, please introduce themselves.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Christopher Giuliano, licensed landscaper and professional engineer with the Firm of Giuliano Associates. To my right, your left, is Mr. Stephen Lazarus, project architect with Lazarus &amp; Sargent. And to my left, your right, is Ellen Zabor, the co-director for the Creative Beginnings Learning Center. Now, in a moment, I'm gonna get up and run through the presentation. And both Stephen and Ellen are here to answer any questions, obviously with respect to architecture or with respect to the operations of the facility. So, without further ado. So, this evening, we're here for a special permit site plan approval for an expansion to an existing daycare facility located at 3 Technology Drive. Before you on the easel is the existing conditions. So, across the top of the map is Technology Drive. On the left side of the map is Research Parkway. The acres, the property is about 4.36 acres. There's quite a bit of wetlands located throughout the property. And currently, there is a 34 space parking lot that serves a 5,048 square foot building with associated playground to the south. Now, back in 2003, when this facility was approved by this commission, this was the site plan that the commission saw. The reason why I'm pointing this out is just to let the commissioner, remind the commission, that at that time of approval, there was already an addition proposed for the building, and then a secondary gymnasium that was part of that approval. Now, the size, square footage of those two additional buildings was approximately 3,500 square feet. So, we fast forward now 16 years later, and Phase 2 is now becoming a reality, but with a new owner and new facility managing. So, in order to accomplish what they want, which is now a much larger addition, approximately 6,458 square feet, located in approximately the same area as the prior approved addition. What we need to do is with that additional square footage, we need to expand our parking lot. We need to take care of our drainage facilities. And in doing that, obviously, from the correspondence you saw, there was a lot of back and forth as we worked with Planning and Zoning Commission and the various town departments. So, in the end, what needed to be done to make this a reality for the facility is we first had to relocate our driveway entrance approximately 12 feet to the east. In addition to that, we went and got a zoning variance for a reduction to the front yard landscaping setback. In the IX zone, the entire front yard landscape area, or the entire front yard setback, needs to be landscaped. Unfortunately, due to the restrictions on the site with the wetlands and the location of the existing facility, we were unable to comply with that, so we went to the Zoning Board of Appeals. We asked for a reduction of the landscaping from the required 60 feet down to a minimum 36.2. There is no reduction along Research Parkway, as we have no access on there, and we're not parking against Research Parkway. So, along with the expansion of our parking lot, we've also gone ahead and made it a one-way circular traffic. So, cars will come in, immediately turn to the right, loop around, come across the front of the building, and then back out to Technology Drive. Now, this serves two purposes. One is to allow us to get the required number of parking spaces in the loud area. Secondly, it allows us to control the traffic through this facility. With one-way traffic, we know which way the car's gonna be coming in, which way they're gonna be turning, and then the facility itself will direct the parents of the students there on how to operate and come through the parking lot. It'll be able to control how everything functions, especially during the peak traffic hours from 7:00 to 9:00, which is drop-off, and from about 3:00 to 3:30 to 6:00, which is pickup time. In addition to that, we have designated a certain number of spots, particularly for staff, and then the remaining spots, particularly along the front of the building, for drop-off specifically. And this facility serves ages, basically, from infants on up to about 6 years old before they are going into the public school system. So, we have the parallel parking spots in front that'll be further designated for parents with infants, so that they can get in and get out, and they don't have to be walking through the parking lot with their very young children. In addition, staff will be out there directing the parents, helping parents get their kids in and out, to make this a more smooth transition. In addition, once we have, sorry. Also with the parking lot, we have relocated the dumpster over to the southwest corner. And we've made a couple minor changes to the drainage facilities. Now, with this being in the watershed protection district, we have a usual system where we actually have a sand filter on-site, and then followed by a detention basin. With the expansion of both the facility and the parking lot, we had to do an analysis on the drainage system to make sure what was there and built could function and handle the increase in impervious surface. Running through that analysis, my office determined that the existing facilities are sized appropriately, with only a minor upgrade, and that minor upgrade is the berm between the sand filter and the detention basin. It has to be raised up about seven inches for the increase in water, so that we meet the criteria set forth by both Water and Sewer and the Engineering Department. As part of the new facility expansion, the sand filter area will be completely cleaned out and renovated. Again, it's been 16 years since the facility was constructed, so what we'll be doing with that is we'll be removing the sand filter, putting new sand in, removing all the vegetation, all the trees that have grown up within that area. As I said, we will be reconditioning the berm and raising it slightly. And then with the detention basin, we will be cleaning all the debris out of that, including any trees that have grown up. In working with Water and Sewer, they've also asked us to do a couple other minor modifications on the drainage system. The most important is that we are going to be restricting flow through the oil-water separator on-site by basically putting a metal plate in the opening that directs water to the oil-water separator. This way, once we get our larger storms, we really only wanna treat the first flush and the low-flow storms with the oil-water separators, and larger storms. By having that restrictor plate, we will bypass it around the sand filter and directly into the detention basin. What that does is, it helps with the cleaning of the stormwater coming off the parking lot. It'll also help with the longevity of both the oil-water separator and the sand filter, because less material, less water getting through, it'll have to be less maintenance over the long run. With respect to roof runoff, we're going to continue the same pattern that we are, that we are, facility is currently using, which is the roof leaders currently go to an underground galley system, which consists of three 4x4x8 concrete galleys. We're actually going to be relocating those galleys and doubling the size, so there will be now be six galleys. And that'll take the additional runoff from the addition, as well as the existing facility. As part of the review process, Ms. Hand asked that we look at and provide information regarding the grading around the building. And the reason for that was, as part of this process, mainly through the Wetlands Commission, we agreed to not grade the westerly side of the building, but actually install a retaining wall. So, what we've done is, one of the sheets in the drawing set, is we provided a blow-up of the building with the detailed grading, showing you spot grades, toe of wall, top of wall, and how we are actually restricting our construction activities to the east side of that, so that we aren't impacting the wetlands and doing what could be considered unnecessary grading and impacting the wetlands that are on the property. So, we've taken a very environmental-sensitive approach to the site, considering what wetlands and what natural resources are on the property. In addition, we've provided a detailed drawing of the sand filter and detention basin, where we were actually calling out now to have a fence around the facility, which, surprisingly, we weren't asked or weren't required to do back in 2003. But with the kids and the expansion of the facility, it makes perfect sense to close off that area and protect the students who are going to be on the site. Other than that, the site plan is pretty straightforward, so, as you all know, I like to be short, be sweet, turn it back over to the commission and answer any questions that you may have about the engineering. And as I said, both Stephen and Ellen are here to answer questions about the architecture or the operations of the facility.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Giuliano. Questions from commission members for the applicant on the application? Mr. Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Most of my questions have to deal with Mrs. Hand's letter to Mr. Giuliano on October 1st, and it concerns, you know, the flow of traffic, the parking, the drop-off. Can you get into a little more detail on how that's gonna work?
Let me preface my answer, because I did give Ms. Hand a pretty detailed response, but from my standpoint, I'm looking at it as an engineer. I don't run the facility. So, once I provide you with my answer, I'll ask Ms. Zabor to kind of tell you how things most likely will work from actually the operations. As I stated, we basically came through, redesigned the parking lot for the expansion, and created the circular traffic route so that we could control the vehicles as best we can.
But yeah, let me just interrupt for a second, because basically what I'm looking for is, you know, the number of trips, you know, between 7:00 and 9:00 AM. You know, how the, you know, the infants are gonna be dropped off, whether or not they're gonna be, you know, the parents will park and then walk into the school, how that'll work. And, you know, the same with the 3:30 to 6:00 period. You know, so I'm kinda looking for, you know, specifics as far as numbering. And one of the items that came up in the letter was, you know, potential queuing out onto, you know, research. You know, what kind of mitigation if that occurred? You know, is there a possibility of that happening, and what will you do to fix that? So, those are really the specifics. I just...
No, I understood where you were going.
Yep.
So, I do appreciate the further explanation. To answer your question as short and simply as I can, in my explanation to Ms. Hand, I basically explained that the parking spots that are meant for the parents, we have, I believe, 19 that are designated for the parents, just in this area right here. If you figure about 10 minutes per drop-off, each parking space can be turned over six times per hour. So, in an hour, six times 19, it's over, I believe, on like 130 vehicles can get through in that timeframe. And that's purely an engineer's mind mathematically looking at it, alright? And that's why I kinda, and before we got into a little bit further discussion, I wanted to preface the way I perceive it. 10 minutes may be a lot of time, it may not. Speaking from experience, when my child was small, maybe I was in the five to 10-minute range. I can't remember. It's been 20 some odd years. But the idea is, again, trying to designate at least the parallel spots for the infants, parents with infants, because they will be, I don't wanna use the word difficult, but getting an infant into a facility, lot more to carry, lot more to deal with.
Yep.
So, having them closer in a parallel spot should make that transition easy. And again, 10 minutes per spot, on average, and that's an estimate on my part, we can turn over more vehicles than the peak number as per the traffic study prepared by Buber's Traffic Associates. Will I say that there is no possibility of queuing outside the facility? I can't say that, alright? It's always a possibility. But the idea of designating certain spots for parents, having staff to help get usher parents and kids in, and the spots closest to the facility being designated for parent drop-off, specifically during the hours in the morning and the afternoon, we're doing what, as much as we can to minimize that. Now, do I feel that there's going to be so much traffic at the facility that it would actually queue up onto Research Parkway? No, I don't, because of, as I said, the way we have this planned out. Plus, you know, if there is any queuing, it could possibly be a few cars onto Technology, but I don't believe even that's gonna happen. Right now, with 34 parking spots and 85 students at this facility, that doesn't happen now. We are expanding the parking lot significantly. We're adding another 50% in staff. And while we are, you know, bringing the student range up to 185, the, all the improvements that we've made to the facility are there to minimize any impact onto the public roads from the drop-off or pickup hours. And again, if you want a little bit more specific details on how staff is gonna do that, or the facility itself, I would direct your, have you direct your question more to Ms. Zabor, who is actually going to be on-site, day in and day out, dealing with this, and probably knows really how this would work better than the way I've approached it from more of an analytic sense. And also, I believe, one, Mr. Fitzsimmons mentioned the Google Earth photos that I submitted as, with one of my letters. That was just to, that was taken over various years, and those are basically to show you that during the day, most days, and I think it was five out of the seven days, including a Saturday, this parking lot is almost empty as it sits now. I don't think there were 10 cars in the parking lot. So, really, the only time that this facility sees heavy traffic is during the morning and evening hours during the pickup. And eventually, maybe the first week or two, when you have new parents dropping off kids, it may be a little chaotic, but as everyone gets into the swing of how things work, that'll all smooth itself out as well, and I think the facility will continue to run very smoothly the way it does now.
Excuse me, Mr. Cohen, would you like the applicant to give a little bit more in-depth, or are you...
Sure. Yeah, if you feel it would help. What I was gonna ask right now was, you know, is there a traffic monitor? And, you know, when the drop-off is occurring, I mean, is anybody out there directing traffic? And, you know, will the signage be, you know, readily apparent? I mean, you're right, it is gonna take a few, you know, trips to get accustomed to the layout, but, you know, we wanna start out correctly, so the signage should be pretty self-apparent, where, you know, people should be, you know, pulling in and parking and...
Quite honestly, we don't have anything at this point, because our parking lot is never full at this point. Children, I have a list here, I don't know if you wanna see it, of children's hours now. They're all staggered. Not everybody comes in at 7:00 or 8:00. They all have scheduled hours. So, some are 7:00 to 4:30, 8:00 to 5:30, 7:50 to 2:40. They all have different hours. So, we don't ever have to worry about that at this point. If that were to happen, where we got to the point where we are filling and whatever, then we have our proposal here that we had sent to you, where we would have an area. But that would be for our 3 and up, more than, we wouldn't do it with the infants or the toddlers. It would be with the older children, who could quickly say goodbye to their parent. And it was all laid out here, that the parents would have to have everything ready. We would just unbuckle the child, they'd say goodbye, we'd bring them in. We have an iPad now that they could, we don't use it right now, but we could always start using it, where they would sign their child in right there, and then we could bring the children to the classroom for them.
Okay. Just one last comment. And again, it's based on the letter dated October 1st. Would you have any trouble if we made a couple of these items, conditions of approval, as far as, you know, marking the plans with, you know, the traffic pattern and, you know, the parking spaces?
No. In fact, you know, from a planning and zoning side, we have pavement markings, we have signage. But if you felt, or the commission felt, we should go a little bit further, maybe different color line stripe for that, for parent drop-off, that's easy enough to do. It's just a different color type of paint on the ground. And as you know, I'm generally very easygoing, and if we can do something that isn't going to be crazy, difficult for the applicant to do, or expensive, I will say yes, and we can agree and move on.
Okay. Yeah, this is basically, you know, stating that, you know, you're in agreement with the plans, and it's gonna work that way. That's basically...
Okay.
Can I, can I interject? So, my understanding was that as currently proposed, that what's currently proposed to us is that there would, under normal circumstances, all of the spaces that aren't occupied by staff at the time would just be drop-off/pickup, without sort of this organized situation. And that if the queuing gets to a point where it's starting to back up onto the road or towards the road, that's the point where this other plan gets implemented.
Correct.
Is that correct? So, and there is no proposed signage or designation of any of the drop-off/pickup spaces at this time? Correct?
No. The last part of your statement is incorrect, because we've called out on the plans which spaces are designated for employee...
No, but I mean, how they will be physically designated in the field. There is no proposed signage, right?
There is nothing yet, but as Mr. Cohen kinda suggested, as a condition of approval, and I've agreed to, if that's what this commission would see in the planning office, that's very easy to do.
Okay. So, all I'm getting at is, if the commission, beyond what's proposed right now, if there are other things that you would like to, or think we should require of the applicant, like designation of certain spaces, whether it's by signage or by different striping, or if there are other things that the commission wants to require, I just wanna make sure it's clear in the conditions and clear on the record, because I don't want us to keep rehashing this after the fact. So, that's just where I'm going with it.
Thank you, Mrs. Hand.
Thank you.
Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, all set.
Other commission, yes. Mr. Hine?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I noticed in reviewing the application that the name of the applicant is Jose Ortega/KLA Schools. Who's KLA, what's KLA Schools?
We were purchased a little over two years ago by KLA Schools. They are owned by Roberto and Candy Ortega. They have several schools, mostly in the Florida area. They also have franchises in California, Washington. They don't own any other school in the Northeast, other than ourselves. They have one in Kentucky, and then several, like I said, in the south.
Do you, you keep referring to schools. Do you consider yourselves a school?
Yes.
Okay. And the, does KLA Schools also run elementary schools?
They have one in Miami.
And do you guys, do KLA Schools follow any sort of educational philosophy?
They are Reggio Emilia-based.
What's that?
Um, it is a, it's actually Reggio Emilia is a pla- is a town in Italy, and it is where it started. It's, we don't really necessarily do it here in Connecticut, um, but it's a lot of natural thing, you know, natural play, natural, um, uses in the classroom, you know, they have a lot of, they use a lot of clay, things in your area, things like that.
Okay. Um, are your, is, is your staff trained in that in any way?
Um, they have sent, twice, they have sent one of their pedagogical people up, and they brought some of us down to Miami, but we currently are a traditional childcare center, so we do not follow Reggio Emilia.
Okay, but KLA Schools is, is, is a fan, is it a franchise?
They are a business, but they also have franchises, they own us, a school in Kentucky, and then several in the Southeast, and then they do have franchises in the West.
Okay, so your facility is directly owned by KLA School?
Yes.
Okay.
Ellen, can I get you to add how long you've worked in this school?
Oh, I've worked since we opened, I helped write the business plan and helped build the building.
So, so when KLA?
Mr. Lazarus, can you speak?
Excuse me, if, if.
I'm sorry.
Please.
When, when KLA took over.
Name an address, please.
I'm sorry, Stephen Lazarus, Lazarus and Sergeant Architects, when KLA took over, they kept the existing staff, by and large, okay.
Yes, myself and Amy who's over there, we are co-directors, we've been there since day one. So we haven't changed really much since they bought us, except our titles.
Fair enough. And I, I thought I heard earlier that the age range will be from infant till, to somewhere around six years, five, six years old?
Well, we, we have infants through a pre-K program, we also have before and after school for, um, Fritz and Highland only, because we all, we don't have our own bus, so it's just on the Durham School System buses. So it's only about ten children.
Okay, are there any, like, formal? Is there any formal education that is provided through your facility?
Absolutely.
I'm in favor of, of this, so don't, don't, don't take this the wrong way. I, this is more of a, um, issue through you, Mr. Chairman, to the town planner. Was there any consideration given, my understanding is, um, and, and this happened before, uh, I got up here, but my understanding was that in this particular zone, we had gotten prohibited, or changed the regulations to prohibit schools in, and in fact, I noticed in looking over the regulations that some zones permit nurse, nursery schools, but this particular zone doesn't even per- permit nursery schools.
It permits chi- child daycare facilities.
Right, and, and so I, I guess.
So the difference is based on state classifications in the state permitting process? And I believe you are a state permitted child daycare facility, correct?
I just wanna.
So that is how it's differentiated from an educational institution.
Fair, fair enough. But there, there is no, I noticed in the, in the, if that's kinda the definition that we use, then we should, I think, may, maybe we should look at maybe including that in the regulations so that it's, it's clearer. The other thing is, I didn't see a definition for nursery schools. So when I was going over this, I was a little confused as to what the distinction is between a school, a nursery school, and a daycare center. Again, I'm, I'm in favor of this application, so, you know, this is, um, no issue with, with the substance of your application, but I think maybe in the future, it's something that we, as a commission, can take a look at. Mr. Giuliano, um, oh, I just had it in front of me here. Did you have the opportunity to take a look at Mr. Baltramidis's October seventh, twenty nineteen memorandum?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I got it, I believe, Monday, or the eighth, the morning of the eighth, and I believe I provided Ms. Hand with a reply on the ninth, going through the comments.
Okay, um, and, and so you do not, um, have an issue of complying with any of, of his recommendations?
No, none at all, in, in fact, the one that probably impacts the plan the most was on the, the length of the parallel parking spots, which when I talked to Ms. Hand, she noticed that she had missed that, but I had already made the change, and twenty-one feet, which is the requirement, is easy to do. So no, I don't have any problems with any of his recommendations.
And no problem taking out the parking stops, uh, either? I think that was another one of his recommendations.
As I pointed in my letter back, my reply that went through the planning office, the planning department generally wants wheel stops, I have the engineering department not wanting wheel stops in this case, so as I replied, I'll let the two departments fight it out as to which way they wanna go, and I'll make the change on the plan, or leave it as is, I am fine with either. I do understand Rob's comment about snow plowing, most people don't like the wheel stops because it is difficult, and it, it hinders snow plowing. But again, for cars nosing, coming nose to nose, sometimes wheel stops are the best way to prevent it.
I, I, i- if I could just give my two cents, as, as a personal injury attorney, uh, I can tell you that I would much rather see that parking lot plowed, um, so that any ice is, is taken off the surface, so.
I'll turn, I'll turn back to Casey, and you and Rob can decide.
Well, I, I already have an answer for you, it's, we don't require, so all parking lots should be plowed. When you choose to do by, uh, if you choose to do gravel or something of that nature, we require wheel stops typically because it's hard to maintain striping. So because you have by two minutes, assuming you're doing striping, you don't have to do the wheel stops.
I'll remove them.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Heim, Mr. Fitzsimmons, I believe you have a question or two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For, I, I guess, Chris, my questions are primarily for the applicant, directly, if that's okay through you, and, and first off, thank you for what you do as a dad of two kids who went through daycare, I get it, and so it's interesting looking at your application. You, you gave us a document which says, "The following will distribute to all Creative Beginnings families," okay? It was received in the office September thirtieth, you know what I'm talking about, do you have it in front of you?
Right here.
Okay, so I'm looking at it, and I appreciate Mr. Heim's question, because I know this is developed for a warm school environment, because it doesn't factor in it snows here in New England, I, I, I think, you know, it's almost like this came from the Miami school, because it doesn't take into account what it's like trying to put the kids in the car, you know, and I, believe me, with the, the rain and the snow and all that you experience as well.
Yes.
But I, I read this, a- and I just wanna make sure, this is the plan just for preschool aged children?
Yes.
A- and under, right?
It will be for three and up.
Three and under.
Not do it with the younger children.
Three, three and over or three and under?
Three and over.
Three and over, okay. One of the questions in all the volume of documentation, what is the split of the school?
Um, right now, it's about half and half, so we have three and older, we have three classrooms, um, so that's about fifty-ish, and then we have four classrooms of three and under, which are forty-something, so we have more over three than under.
More older?
Yes.
More over three, okay. Um, i- i- I think, and again, I, I know my place is, is zoning, and the reasoning before us is traffic. It's not, not to talk about the, the, the operations, because obviously the traffic and the queuing, but that's, that leads to my questions. Because from what I understand, and, and Chris did an excellent presentation, the employees is being, the number of employees will be increased by a dozen, pre, uh, for a total of thirty-two employees, and the number of children will be increased to a hundred and seventy-six.
Yes.
However, but the building is more than double.
Right.
So I, I'm, I'm having a tough time, like, and I, I, again, to compare to what Mr. Harms said, it's school, it's parking, you know, and, and we're a car society, unfortunately, we're not Miami, we're not other parts of the country, you know, I mean, you're talking to a guy who took his first Uber ride recently, but, but it's just, this is New England, and so I'm just curious how you think that's going to work.
Well, again, they have one, two, three, four, five, six preschool rooms going in, and then we'll have, we actually have the current building, we want to make some changes with, so there won't be as many classrooms, um, because we have a small kitchen at this point, so we would have to expand the kitchen. What our current infant room, we would like to make a closet, because we needed larger closet area. Um, so there won't be as many classrooms in the current facility, so that would actually bring the number down from the number that you have probably. And so the, the ratio for the state of Connecticut is for, um, three and over is one teacher for ten children, and then under three, it's one to four, so we would have two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve teachers for preschool, and then probably about the same for under, you know, then we'd of course have part-time people, but.
Okay. That's, that was my next question, do you have part-timers that were not factored in, or are factored into the numbers?
They're probably factored in, because we have people who leave earlier, you know, be, it, it goes upon the numbers, our, it's a, it's a number game for us.
Right.
You know, we have to keep our ratios. Um, so we have people who come in to give lunches and breaks and things like that, but they're not there the whole day, they're there maybe ten to two.
Yep.
You know, so they don't, wouldn't even, parking wise, they wouldn't even be a factor, because everyone would be there when they got there, and they wouldn't have left yet when they leave.
And then, i- i- if I might, cause I, I, as I said, I read with interest the, you know, and I, I, you know, it's, it's almost like a concierge service, the, the drop off and pickup, the iPad come, it's like, it's as easy as returning a rental car at the airport, is, is what it looks like, and I'm like, and it, it sounds good on paper, having been there, uh, that I've never, you know, cause the best was, do not talk to other parents while in the drop off zone, I'm, I'm out, I'm out, you know? So, um, but I, I think the concern, the concern I have on traffic is the reality of it, we read the peer review, the traffic, the queuing is the issue, and, and having experienced it firsthand, you know, and, and where my kids went to daycare here in town, there's occasionally when it was an issue, it was an issue with parking, it was an issue where, you know, all of a sudden storms coming, everyone wants to leave at two o'clock. You know, the state closes the roads at two o'clock, that's what I'm saying. All I'm suggesting is, you should have a plan to address that, because this plan is perfect if you're in Miami, but I think part of it is, and it leads to the traffic and the queuing, because the issue, the issue is, when it come up, came up about the plowing, the, the issue is the hours of operation, because this is a special permit, and right now, your hours of operation, I assume, are six to six?
Uh, seven to five thirty.
Seven to five thirty. If that were to change, as we became, become more of a twenty-four hour society, the traffic study only looks at peak traffic. It doesn't look at if all of a sudden you had services open, where you could stay open till nine o'clock at night. It's just, it is interesting, but I, I think part of it is you have to consider other, you know, things are changing in society, I know thirteen years, you've been there, and, and, and so it's, it's nice and congratulations on the expansion, and, you know, but I, I think part of the parking and the queuing is, is legitimate, because you are gonna have a substantial increase, and, and obviously new families coming in and, and, and new cars, so I would ask that, part of it is, we're not, you know, I'm in favor of it, obviously, but I think I wanna make sure we don't create a, a situation where, you know, anyone would tell me in town, you know, the Dunkin' Donuts can't handle the traffic from seven fifteen to seven thirty-five. It's been like that since we approved the Dunkin' Donuts, I mean, it, this is not that situation, and this is not Route Five, you know, so it, but I think the idea is if things go differently, you, you know, don't let, don't have a problem without coming back and trying to address it, because traffic is a huge issue, Research Parkway and things. I think it was Mr. Cohen who asked the question, I wanted to follow up. Regarding the changes that are happening in, in childcare facilities, again, related to traffic, if my child was there, um, would you provide any transportation to any other second, uh, schools here in town or Maryland?
We do not, we just have children before and after school from Fritz and Highland, because we're.
From where?
From Mary Fritz and Highland.
Oh, sure.
Because we're on their bus line, that's the only reason we, that's the only one we take.
Okay, so two of our elementary schools would potentially drop off kids at your school?
They do now, yes.
They do now, and what age are those kids?
They're from kindergarten till probably third grade.
Third grade, K three, okay, so that's a big yellow school bus coming in?
It doesn't come into the, no, we have a teacher that walks out and gets them on the.
Thank you, okay, so, and, and does it just drop off, or is it?
Both.
It's, okay, so, so there is a school bus, and I know some daycare childcare facilities have their own vans and shuttles where all of a sudden it's at a deep, this is a change, it's happening, you know, and, and this is an area that I know too much about. So all of a sudden, now you have your own vans, you have no parking for any of your own vans, right? Am I, am I not, I didn't miss that in the plan, right?
We have no vans.
Alright, so if you've gotta go vans, you're gonna need to come back, because you've used all your parking, if I understand correctly. And I think I look at other childcare facilities in town, countrywide, you know, all of a sudden, everyone wants, you know, they don't, they don't like the concierge service, they want the kids to be brought to and from for them, so that's just, the, the caveat is, right now, you have no vans, there's no plans for vans, so as a condition of approval, that's okay, that you couldn't have vans without coming back before us?
Okay.
Be, uh, uh, cause you'd have to readjust parking, right?
We have no plans at this.
Okay, and, and again, I, I just, things change.
Right.
You know, so, um, and I think vans would reduce the cars too. And then, as far as the hours of operation, so your hours are fixed right now. I don't know if that was part of the condition of approval when we approved it in, the years ago, I mean, do, we put sometimes limitations in hours, and then make people come back to make sure that it's consistent, is that, was there ever a limitation in hours?
There wasn't, and I'm, I'm not sure, I mean, obviously, it's up to the commission, I'm not sure that you need it here, because what we're really worried about are their busiest times, right, which probably won't really ever change. So if they have, you know, suddenly ki- kids can stay till midnight for parents that were, you know, other shifts or something like that, I don't think you, it's going to have a massive, plus the traffic in the area is reduced during that time, so I wouldn't, and, and there aren't any immediate residences right there, so, um, I, I wouldn't think it would have, it would be as much of concern, but obviously, that's at the commission's discretion.
I'm, I'm good with that, and I, and I would like to say to the applicant and the, the new owner, I, I'm strongly in favor of the condition that you clean out and maintain the existing sand filter detention base, and that is, uh, you know, as, as I know, when I was out there, i- i- it's so overgrown, you know, but obviously, it'd be great to take care of, and then, once it's taken care of, maintain, so.
As part of both wetlands and planning, there are documents in place for the maintenance, and I pushed on the wetland side to make it part of, you know, prior to a building permit even, they were a little bit more lenient and have a timeframe involved, but um, that's the major concern, that it, it needs to be cleaned out, because the former land care company, that's, that was their dumping grounds.
Sure.
So.
I got you.
Well, hopefully with the fence, that'll all stop as well.
Alright, and, and one last point, um, probably to the commissioner, to the chairman, the final plans, could we have them include a snow shelf? Where they're gonna put the snow?
Absolutely.
Alright.
Mr. Giuliano, I'm sure you have an idea or two where to put a snow shelf?
We'll take care of it, not a problem.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I think all of my questions have already been exhausted, but I know there was questions on traffic, I see we have our traffic guy out there, Mr. Thompson, uh, who, uh, did the traffic study, did a peer review, excuse me, on the traffic study. Mr. Thompson, if you please, uh, come forward, introduce yourself, and give us a, if you would, a summary on your, uh, on your peer review of the traffic study, please.
Good evening, for the record, John Thompson, licensed professional engineer, and as the commission is aware, I was engaged to conduct a peer review of the Buberis Traffic Study. It's a very straightforward application from the traffic study and my peer review, the unique aspect tonight is that Mr. Buberis is not here to make his presentation, so I'll try to cover what he did in his traffic report, and the areas that I identified during my review of his application. Mr. Fitzsimmons, when you were reading the materials that were received, I didn't. Uh, Mr. Fitzsimmons, when you were reading the materials that were received, I didn't hear that you had received my peer review report. But you you subsequently referenced it, so can I assume you have it?
We we have it from the engineering, yes.
Okay. And and my my role as a commission well knows is not to advocate for or against the project, but to critique the traffic study that was prepared in support of the application to make sure that it it covered the areas that are required for a comprehensive traffic study and make sure that it used proper techniques and procedures in conducting that analysis. You've heard from Mr. Bubaris in the past on a number of applications for the commission. He's been around a long time, and I'll say the study was, uh, very well done, it addressed the the major points. He introduced the project in a comprehensive and clear nature, which made it very understandable to for the review. He identified the the background conditions, identified the intersections that were appropriate for analysis being the site drive and technology drive, and subsequently, technology drive and research parkway. He conducted traffic counts between 7 o'clock and 9 o'clock in the morning and between 4 o'clock and 6 o'clock in the afternoon, and within that period identified what was the peak hour of traffic that was being generated by this daycare center. He performed an analyses on those numbers based on the number of students that were presently at the school and generated traffic and placed it onto the road, uh, based on the traffic counts that he conducted. And then very simply, this was a very straightforward traffic study because coming out of technology drive, you either take a left south on research parkway or north on research parkway. And the, for all intents and purposes, uh, everyone would expect, and I agree, that the traffic patterns, if this project is approved and the project is constructed, that the traffic patterns will replicate exactly what's out there today. When he conducted his analyses of the 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 future with the expanded traffic facility, uh, the commission well knows that we use ITE trip generation rates. In this case, uh, Mr. Bubaris utilized the actual traffic counts as the the very actual number of students and the generated traffic from the current activity as opposed to some other unique variable in 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 creating the traffic in the future. And what that does using the existing traffic, it actually produces a higher generation rate than what ITE would expect based on 1,000 square feet or number of staff or some other variable. So he's taken a very conservative approach in generating the future traffic based on what might be experienced from this site onto the adjacent roadway. He also analyzed the operations of the intersection, uh, with respect to traffic volumes, level of service and capacity. He also looked at the the number of accidents that were reported out in that area. I took it one step fur- for further and contacted Lieutenant Mayo in the traffic department just to, uh, confirm and to my own satisfaction that sometimes statistics don't always tell the whole story. And I wanted to know whether there was other issues that the Wallingford Police Department was aware of that would not necessarily be reflected in, uh, the accident statistics. Lieutenant Mayo said that the only issue above and beyond the absence of accidents is the recognition that speeds on research parkway are higher than what the posted speed limit is. And that that gets us a little bit into the site distance. But it, the reality is that having sat in that chair for 20 years, we know full well that almost all the streets in Wallingford sadly experience speeds higher than the posted limit, and we have to deal with it. And how we deal with that is enforcement and in the design of the intersections to make sure that we have adequate site distance for the 85 percentile speed of what the vehicles are actually operating at. So we we know that information. Uh, Mr. Bubaris, uh, generated the traffic for the expanded facility, put that traffic onto the roadway based on the distribution patterns of the existing traffic that's out there, reanalyzed the intersections, and the bottom line was the levels of service for stop sign controlled intersections is very satisfactory. I I I talked to other people that work out in that area, and the response was, we didn't even know it was there. There there may be isolated periods of time when, um, there's traffic activity at the site, at the site driveway. But in all honesty, it's so far removed from research parkway. It would be highly unlikely, in my opinion, that you're going to see any queuing from the site driveway back out onto technology drive are are almost unbelievable to to research parkway. So I don't think that that's an issue. I I think all the discussions about onsite operations are appropriate. But the the traffic study that that I reviewed, uh, really focuses on the site drive and technology drive and technology drive and research parkway. And both of those intersections, as I say, have excellent operations and are expected to continue to have excellent operations in the future. Sightlines were measured by me at both of the locations, and we we have adequate sightline for the 85 percentile speeds. So but bottom line is that the, I think the impact of this proposed expansion on the adjacent roadway network is going to be negligible. The applicant, as was pointed out in the the traffic study and the correspondence, still has to go back before OSTA to get a certification or determination on a certification for this project. So as I've said to the commission repeatedly over the years, you have that second set of eyes above and beyond town staff or your peer reviewer that looks at this. So it it's, they're going to make sure that it's not going to create a burden or problems onto the adjacent roadway network. I had in my peer review, report a number of suggested conditions, including some of the markings and signing that have already been discussed to make this operate in a a safe fashion. But the bottom line is, in terms of of major traffic generators that the town and the commission has dealt with over the years, this is a relatively minor one and should not present any safety problems or operational problems to the town's adjacent roadway network.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Any commission members with any questions for Mr. Thompson? Yes, Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, yeah, I've I've got one question, I guess, on on the traffic study. Yeah, I don't, I don't see any problems getting out of technology drive, going to, you know, research parkway, left to right. Um, I assume that, uh, well, I I guess I shouldn't assume. But, um, I'm more concerned with where the traffic goes at the Carpenter Lane, uh, traffic light. My assumption would be most of their cars are going to go out to Route 68 and not not take a left up Carpenter or take a right on Carpenter Lane. Did they?
That was not analyzed, and and the reason it wasn't, and let me explain why it wasn't. I I honestly don't have any idea whether they would go right on Carpenter or continue south on research. But when the background, when the traffic generated by a site becomes less than 10% of the traffic already on the roadway network, it becomes insignificant and almost impossible to analyze. Uh, we, and I I know this for a fact on experience, that Carpenter Lane and Research Parkway with the four-way stop sign operates fairly satisfactory. So I don't think the traffic that would be coming out of this facility making a left turn on research and going to Carpenter is going to adversely affect that intersection. And since it's so far removed, I didn't think it was necessary that 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 be analyzed. Because as I say, it's a, the traffic component from this is very minor.
Thank you, yes, I just wanted to see if it was analyzed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Anyone else? Uh, just quick, Mr. Giuliano, uh, as Mr. Thompson indicated, he made some recommendations for geometric improvements and and traffic controls. Have they, those, I'm sure you've looked at them, have those been incorporated into the plans, and if not, what have or what have not?
All of Mr. Thompson's comments are already incorporated into the plans.
Okay, thank you. And before I go out to the public, unless, again, any other ques- uh, commissioners for? Mr. Thompson, Mr. Thompson, thank you very much. Uh, Mrs. Hand, if you would like to, uh, make any, uh, any comments before I go out to the public on the application?
Uh, yeah, just quickly, um, so just a few, uh, sort of the the big ticket items to touch on. Um, you see, I have several recommended, recommended conditions of approval. Those involve the comments from the other departments that were referenced. Um, and specifically, uh, I just wanted to touch on a couple of things. So, uh, Mr. Thompson's recommended conditions are included as recommended conditions of approval as well as, uh, conditions from the Department of Engineering. So a lot of things were addressed, but we just incorporated them all in to kind of tie up the loose ends on final plans. Um, so the other things, I just wanted briefly, um, landscaping, if you looked at the, if you saw in the correspondence, there was a lot of back and forth about landscaping, particularly the existing wooded area along Research Parkway. Um, so you'll see in my, um, my recommended conditions in my October 1st, uh, letter, uh, include to ha- having the limits of clearing to be marked in the field by the design engineer. What I don't want to happen is we end up over-clearing and then we lose the amount of of landscaping buffer there. Um, so that was a recommended condition, um, and that we maintain the compliant number of trees. Um, and no clearing or tree cutting to be permitted beyond that designated area. Um, and then there is language in that letter also in reference to the drop-off pickup conversation. And then, uh, the other, um, thing I wanted to touch on, uh, was the, uh, the cleaning out and maintenance of the existing sand filter, uh, Mr. Giuliano pretty much touched on all of that. You will see in my recommended conditions, um, that the basin is to be cleaned, um, in addition to the sand filter. Um, and that including, and I discussed this with our engineering department and water and sewer. And the recommendation is that trees are to be cut that are within the basin but not stumped. So, and I think that that was okay. Um, so that's, we just don't like to have trees growing in our basins. Uh, but we thought stumping would make more of a problem. Um, and then, uh, my other conditions are sort of standard conditions, sedimentation and erosion control bond. Um, and then the, uh, we talked about the queuing and the pickup, um, and the the landscaping requirements. So, um, and I think the two conditions you added tonight in the discussion, as far as I have them, were um, no vans to be permitted for the site without modification to the approval and final plans to include a snow shelf.
Thank you. And just one quick question for you, and it doesn't deal really with this application. But we're talking about detention basins, and we certainly have a lot of them, and we approve plans with detention basins. Is there any, you mentioned, you know, that this one is overgrown trees and and all of that. So probably not functioning as a detention basin should perhaps function. Do we do any inspection on existing detention basins?
So you'll see
Not, again, on
Yep.
Other projects?
Yeah, so over the last few years, we've started requiring, um, so in the last maybe 15 years, we started requiring operations and maintenance plans for the systems. In the last, say, five years, we've started specifically requiring compliance with them be referenced on the plan. So it's very, very clear. Um, and we typically, it's response-based, so we don't look at them unless there's an issue.
Complaint.
Yeah, they are on private property. Um, but there is right now, um, the Water and Sewer Division is undergoing inspections of the of the basins that are located within the watershed to make sure that those are functioning properly.
Thank you. And at this point in time, this is a public hearing, are there any members of the public who would like to speak on the application? If there are, anyone, please come forward and name an address in your comments. And seeing none, I'll bring it back to, unless other commission members have any final questions, I'll bring it back to the applicant. If you'd like to make any, uh, any additional comments, again, you're not obligated to.
No, I think we're all set. Thank you.
Okay, good enough. Well, at this point in time, uh, seeing no more questions, I entertain a motion to close our public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do we have a second? Uh, second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Moving on, I'll entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve a special permit daycare facility, Ortega, Class Schools 3 Technology Drive, application 405-19. Um, special permit traffic generator for Ortega to construct a 6,458 square foot expansion to the existing daycare and make associated site improvements at 3 Technology Drive. As shown on the plans entitled Bright Beginnings Learning Center, number 3 Technology Drive, Wallingford, Connecticut, dated 3/26/19, I believe, not not 29. Uh, revised through 7/29/19, and additional revision through 10 to 19, subject to the following conditions of approval. Number one, finalization of landscaping items. Uh, in the, uh, letter from Casey Hantown Planner dated October 1st, 2019, items include 1.f.i.i., 1.f.i.v., and 1.f.v.i. And since I'm referencing that that letter right now, I'm going to also add the other conditions of approval. Um, which would be paragraph 2F, uh, the drop-off pickup of children to occur in accordance with the uh, representation made on plans. And paragraph four, uh, item A, to include signage, uh, posted on the, uh, site. Condition number two, recommendations and professional peer review by John Thompson, P.E., dated September 6, 2019. Number three, comments from Fire Marshal dated 7/16/19 and 9/6/19. Comments from Eric Kruger, P.E., Senior Engineer, Water and Sewer Division, dated April 24th, 2019, and July 26th, 2019. Item five, reference to compliance with stormwater system maintenance plan to be provided directly on final plans. Item six, memorandum dated July 19th, 2019, and interdepartmental referral dated October 7th, 2019, from Aaron O'Hare, Environmental Planner. Item seven, memorandum from Rob Voltramidis, Department of Engineering, dated October 7th, 2019. Number eight, sedimentation and erosion control bond to be determined by the town planner. Number nine, sand filters be cleaned as represented on plans. Basin to appropriately be cleaned, including cutting all trees within the basins. Stumps to remain prior to issuance of a building permit. Item 10, compliance with memo from Vanessa Batista, Chief Sanitarium, Sanitarian, dated October 4th, 2019. Item 11, no vans allowed, um, should they be required applicant required to, uh, resubmit plans. And the final one, show the snow shelf on the final plans.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Hind, please.
Yes, to approve.
Yes, yes.
And yes, your application's been approved. Have a good evening.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Moving on, our next item on our agenda is a special permit distribution and opera, uh, distribution operation in office, Benchmark Land Development LLC at 988 East Center Street. Again, if the applicant and or his representative, please come forward to begin preparing for their presentation. And Mr. Fitzsimmons, as always, if you please lead, uh, read the legal notice and note all correspondence for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, uh, legal notice, the following public hearings will be heard at the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of Wednesday, October 16th. Application number two, number four, 11-19, special permit, change in non-conforming uses to allow Benchmark Land Development LLC to operate a truck loading slash distribution facility in office at 988 East Center Street. Correspondence was received, uh, in the office on September 10th, 2019, from Mary Jane Zook. Wallingford, course, uh, inter-office referral was received by the, from the office of the Fire Marshal on August 16th, 2019. A letter, excuse me, a memo was, um, received from Aaron O'Hare, Town of Wallingford's Environmental Planner. On August 29th, a letter was sent from the Town Planner's Office to Benchmark Land Development. An email was received from Dennis Saviva on September 5th, 2019, addressed to the Town Planning Office. A memorandum was received, um, by the Town Planner from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, Wallingford Water and Sewer Division. Wallingford Water and Sewer Division. A copy of a letter was received from Joe Olson on 11/15, 15. And then we received, um, copies of other letters from March 18th, 2019, from James Gerace, Durham Road. We received a letter from Billy Gerace, 31918. Received a copy of a letter from Art Jones on March 21st, 2019. We received a copy of a letter dated March 22nd, 2019, from Grave L. Gerace. We received a copy of a letter from Darlene D'Agostino dated March 24th, 2019. Received a copy of a letter from Brian Nifkin on dated March 25th, 2019. Received a letter of, from March 25th, 2019, from Peter Kennedy. We've also received a copy of a letter dated March 26th, 2019, from Kenneth Herbert. We've also received a copy of a letter of March 26th, 2019, from Walter Gordon. Received a copy of a letter from M. Marard on March 26th, 2019. Received a copy of a letter from Salvador Galvez dated March 27th, 2019. Received a copy of a letter, uh, from John and Rhonda Capello dated March 28th, 2019. Received a copy of a letter from Kathleen Grant dated March 28th, 2019. Received a copy of a letter from, it appears to be from Tim Cosgrove dated March 29th, 2019. Received a copy from, of a letter from Donald Pazmore dated April 1st, 2019. We also received a copy of a letter dated April 1st, 2019, from Jeffrey Dunard. We also received a copy of a letter dated April 2nd, 2019, from Robert Acita. We have a copy of a letter from Gary Avenati dated April 2nd, 2019. We have a copy of a letter dated April 3rd, 2019, from Robin Di Nicola. We also have a copy of a letter signed, uh, signed by Scott Forrester, uh, with no date. We also have letters, a letter from, um, the law firm, excuse me, the surveying firm of Godfrey Hoffman and Hodge, and that was not dated, sorry. We have a copy of an email from the Town Planner, sent to the Town Planner from, um, Dennis Saviva dated April 1st, excuse me, October 1st, 2019. Received a copy of a memorandum from Rob Ultra Midas, Wallingford's Department of Engineering, dated October 7th, 2019. Received a letter from Edward Tartaglia dated September 30th, 2019. Received, uh, a document from Benchmark. We also have, um, a copy of a Realtor.com listing, not sure of the source regarding 988 East Center Street. We also have, um, a letter from Mary Tartaglia dated October 8th, 2019. We have a letter, um, addressed to the Town Planning Office from Marcus Potuck of Godfrey Hoffman dated October 4th, 2019. We have a copy of a letter addressed to Rob Ultra Midas, Wallingford Engineering, from Marcus Potuck. We also have a copy of an email sent from Linda Malali to, uh, Dave. Sorry, I don't have it hit return email address. We also have a copy of a email sent from Anthony Pagnano and Kelly Pagnano, um, addressed to the Town of Wallingford. We have a copy of a letter from D. Warren Williams dated October 21st, 2015. We have a copy of a certified letter sent October 15th, 2019, to Benchmark Land Development from James E. Vitale, Chairman of Wallingford's Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Commission. And finally, we have a copy of an inter-office departmental referral from the Office of Wallingford's Fire Marshal dated October 11th, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. And Attorney Sennaviva, before you get started, I should have pointed out to you before Mr. Fitzsimmons went through that exhaustive reading, as you know, we only have, uh, four members of the commission here this evening, so obviously, uh, for any action on the application, we would need, you know, for an approval, we would need three commission members. So again, as I gave the other applicant the option, if you'd like to carry this until next meeting when we have five members, or if you'd like to continue this evening with four members, it's certainly your option. And I do apologize for not having a full complement.
I understand, Mr. Chairman. We're happy to go forward.
Good. Okay, with that, if you would, uh, please introduce yourself and begin your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission, for your record, my name is Dennis Sennaviva. I'm an attorney with the Sennaviva Law Firm in Meriden. To my right is David Palumbo. He is a member of Benchmark Land Development LLC, the owner and applicant that's before you this evening. To my left is Marcus Potuck. He is the engineer from Godfrey Hoffman Hodge, and he's been involved in developing the plans that are before you. Now, by way of background, the property, as you know, is, uh, 2.09 acres of land. It's located on the north side of East Center Street. It's abutted to the east by a railroad track and railroad spur operated by the Providence and Worcester Railroad. So when you look at this site, which you've probably driven by many times, I pass it twice a day, um, it, it looks much larger than it really is, and that's because, again, the railroad property is probably another 30 feet or so to the west from the spur. Uh, Mr. Palumbo's property starts, um, it, it's, it's, um, about two-thirds of what's, of what you see there that's open when you drive by. Although it has frontage on North Airline roads to the west and East Center Street to the south, the topography, the parcel mandates access from East Center Street only, and that's the way it's been accessed over the years. It is zone CA 40, but has been used historically in ways that are non-conforming. Uh, we, uh, we know that for, uh, many ti- many years in the past, there was a site of a grain and feed business that used the railroad spur. There was a woodworking shop that was there, and my client bought the property from a New Haven Partition Construction Company that used it as a construction yard, uh, and for their construction activity. Now, when my client purchased the property in 2011, the buildings were blighted, and that's the reason for the submission of that Realtor website that you see that's a 2011 advertisement for the part property. And what it shows is the buildings that were there. If you've driven by, you've obviously noted that the buildings that were blighted have been, um, removed. So the only one building remains, and that's being proposed to be removed, uh, with this application. Marcus will up to the easel in just a few minutes. In 2015, my client and I met with the Town Planner and a railroad representative to discuss the use of the site for something called transloading, which is really delivery, taking the product from the railroad cars that used the spur and then delivering them off-site to a eventual purchaser. So it's moving product from the railroad cars to the trucks for eventual delivery to final locations. The railroad was convinced then that the transloading operation was exempt from local and state regulations because of various federal laws. Um, and the, as I note, and we're gonna show you some pictures of just the operation, the, again, the railroad spur, the railroad cars, um, most of the activity occurs within the railroad, uh, property. But fast forward to late 2017, we met again with the Town Planner. We met, uh, in order to come forward, we did want to, um, we contemplated raising that existing building and putting in a new building, which is the application before you tonight, or at least bringing electrical service to that existing, I'll call it a barn, the existing building that's there. Uh, at that time, the planner suggested that we move forwards, and some of the activity does in fact occur at 988 East Center Street. We moved forward, uh, with an application to the Planning Commission. One was submitted in May, uh, of the, of the next year. When we filed that application, uh, it became apparent to the environmental planner that there had been some activity that affected the wetlands on this site. Again, prior to my client's purchase, it had been used for the, uh, location of a lot of construction debris in the wetlands. There had been, there had been huge piles of debris, and Mr. Palumbo can explain that to the commission. Um, so that all that debris was removed, a car load after, uh, truckload of debris, uh, but in doing that, it had, work had been done in the wetlands. So it took us one year to go through the wetlands procedure. We did receive their approval on May 1st of this year. Um, the northerly half of the parcel is wetlands, uh, which had been used for construction debris piles behind the last standing building, uh, prior to my client's purchase. So we're here, having received wetlands approval, and thus the, uh, the most recent delay. Tonight, we seek approval to build the new office, which, again, Marcus will show you on the plan. There's a rendering on the easel for you. I think we've submitted something, uh, in the package, um, that you should have as part of the record. It's designed to, um, be attractive for that location, remove that one last building, which has been rehabilitated, uh, but it, it, um, it would be removed to make vehicular traffic much easier onsite. And then also, we're looking to approve the use, uh, that we believe is less impactful as a non-conforming use than what has previously been there. And of course, under your regulations, if a use does have a lesser impact than a previous use, um, that is a basis on which we can come forward seeking, um, this relief from the commission. Mrs. Hand points out well in her letter of October, I think it was one, that there was, you know, we needed to make clear to the commission why we believe that this application requests permission to use the site in a way not more objectionable than previous uses. And so one of the things that, um, Mr. Palumbo's put together, and again, he'll talk about the operation, is just some bullet points on, on one of the submissions that's part of your record. I handed out additional copies tonight to you. Uh, the hours of operation, um, this facility, uh, has no overnight activity. Everything happens from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, Saturday from 8:00 AM to noon. Um, Dave will explain the nature of the operation, but, um, suffice it to say that there is, there are two products that are delivered to the site. There are two sands. They're not hazardous materials. There are two sites, two types of sand used by Laticrete. Uh, and, um, they're the one customer for my client. So the sands are brought to the location by railcar. To give you an idea of the sort of, the nature of the volume of the operation versus what had been there in the past, I had him analyze the number of railroad cars received from January through August. So it was a period of 35 weeks, and you see that in the pres- in the, uh, the exhibit. That's 157 railcars during that time. So that would be, in 35 weeks, um, that's an average of about four and a half per week. Each railcar holds four truckloads. So that would be 628 truckloads in a period of 35 weeks. Uh, the average truckloads per day are three to four, loaded sporadically throughout the day. The average truckload takes about 12 to 15 minutes to, to be loaded. Uh, and one of the important factors was that all vehicles, all the trucks that come to the site or leave the site, do so by taking either a left-in off of 91 or a right-out going back to 91. So there's no activity that goes, um, east of the site. There is only one part-time employee, which is mu- again, much fewer employees than were there in the past for any of the other previous activities. Uh, that part-time employee is, it mans the conveyor that takes the sand from the railroad car and puts it into the truck. The only other employee is at the site is the truck driver, who doesn't get out of the truck necessarily, just, um, is there during the loading process and then leaves. So this takes about, uh, again, one to two hours per day of load time during the 12-hour uh, operations. So in other words, it's not as if this is ongoing, this truck after truck. The, the number of trucks is, is relatively modest, again, at, at, uh, about four and a half per day. And the purpose of the garage, uh, Mrs. Hand had asked in one of her questions, what the need for the garage, it's utilized for one farm tractor to cut the field in the back and to provide any maintenance equipment for the conveyor. The new office building being proposed is really designed to provide some shelter for the one part-time employee who operates the conveyor. Uh, there'll be a bathroom inside, which doesn't exist now, uh, and there'll be an ability to do some paperwork there. But all of this is of a part-time nature. Uh, again, the hours are relatively long, clearly, but the operation is short. It's sporadic throughout the, the period of day. And, uh, with that, I think we'll start with Marcus going up to the easel to just give you an idea, uh, of what's being proposed with regard to the location of the new office building and, um, and how this would operate with that change.
Good evening. For the record, Marcus Potuck from Godfrey Hoffman, 26 Broadway, North Haven. Um, so I, I'll start my presentation with just a quick, uh, overview of, 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 of the, what existed in, in the past and, and, and as we get forward into today. So in, as, as Attorney Sennaviva said, the, in 2008, prior to, um, our client purchasing, the, the current owner purchasing the property, there were several buildings, um, on the property, smaller buildings that had been removed, and the one existing building that remains, and then the large pile of, of construction debris in the wetland in the back. Um, subsequent to that, um, the, our client purchasing the property, um, a, a small retaining wall and, and some of this gravel area was expanded, um, in taking out these buildings, uh, to, uh, to, to create a, an area that, for him to work within. Then into, uh, 2018, when, um, when the Wetland Commission had, had noticed that this, this construction debris had been removed and the, uh, some, some activity had taken place in the wetlands, uh, we, we mapped the, the, the location again and created a plan to mitigate that, that wetland activity and return it to a quality wetland, um, which is part of the plan that was approved by, uh, the Wetland Commission and is part of our application here tonight. So the, the existing site is, uh, predominantly wetland with a grass, with a hayfield. Um, there is an existing area of gravel, um, adjacent to the, or within the, the site that is adjacent to the railroad. The, the railroad spur is actually 41 feet from the property line. So there is a good, a good majority of what appears to be the site is actually part of the railroad property and, and not part of our actual site. Um, so the proposal is to remove the existing small building and construct a, a, a 12 or a, excuse me, a 30 by 40, uh, building right at the front setback of both North Airline and East Center Street, um, which is essentially 50 feet from each road. Um, the, this building will require a, a small septic system because the sewers are not, uh, provided. This site is located within a future watershed area, not the existing watershed area, and so some of the storm water drainage and whatnot needed to be analyzed and treated prior to leaving the site. Um, so that, that process was, um, difficult, uh, although we have set it up so that all of the storm water from, that is what we would call or consider clean water, so storm water that goes across the, the existing wooded area or lawn areas will be collected and directed down towards the existing wetland, naturally filtered, and then exit the site through an existing culvert under the railroad. And all of the storm water that would be considered dirty water or water that has collected, sand, gravel, whatever, any oils or anything from any vehicles will be, uh, c-. collected, sand, gravel, whatever, any oils or anything from any vehicles, will be collected in the catch basin and run through a diversion manhole, which will divert the high flows. So anything more than a 25-year storm directly into our stormwater detention basin, which is an underground system of connected pipes that will essentially just store the water and allow it to meter out slowly, so that we don't increase any runoff from our site to the existing system. And then we have what's called a Vor Technics unit, which is basically a very fancy, highly engineered oil grit separator, which is designed to, for the capacity of the 25-year storm, it will remove more than 80% of all particles from that stormwater over the course of the year. So the, in doing this, the, we needed to create enough room to have the tractor trailers, the trucks that come and collect the sand, be able to analyze and be sure that the tractor trailers could enter the site, turn around, and leave the site without having to back up to a, in, it's, this can be done in a single motion, rather than using backup beepers and causing noise pollution and whatnot. That is the primary reason for pushing the existing embankment back and expanding the gravel area that exists there today. Also, some of the existing embankment needs to be removed for the proposed building and for the parking associated with that building. In total, we propose 1,300 yards be removed from the site and that the gravel area be increased, I believe, was, by 3,500 square feet from what is existing there today. We've attempted to show on the plans that the existing vegetation along North Airline Road will remain and is sufficient to comply with your landscape requirements. We've also included the proposed trees along the additional areas of the frontage, as is required in your ordinance. However, we would ask that the requirement that the 25-foot, the 25-foot landscape area be reduced to five feet to the south side of the entrance driveway to maintain access to the railroad spur, essentially. So that is a reduction of 20 feet over a 13-foot wide area, so it's a fairly small reduction. And we could still, we still propose a tree in that, in that small area, but we just would ask that it not be 20 feet into the property. With that, I, that's the site in a nutshell. There's, it's not a very complicated site. It's not very big. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions, or would you like the applicant to continue with the operations? I think if, Mr. San Viva, if you were the applicant, would you just continue your presentation and start talking about the operations, if you would, please?
With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to introduce Dave Palumbo. He's a member of Benchmark Land Development, operates the site, and can explain to you just what he does at 988 East Center.
Thank you. My name's Dave Palumbo, and I'm from North Branford, born and raised. I've been in the transportation business for nearly 30 years. My wife and I started it, and since we've had kids, they're now coming into the business or in the business. You know, I've looked at this property, honestly, probably for about 20 years, and I represent railroad property, like beachfront property. There's not a lot of it. And I, early on, starting my business, always said, you know, if I was ever lucky enough to be able to partner with a railroad to move material by rail, for years, rail went away, in many parts of the country. And today, rail is starting to grow, starting to come back. And back a few years ago, this property came up. I had missed the opportunity to buy it, surely just because we didn't have the funds over all the years that it had sold. And I had watched it sell and sell and sell, and at the last time I saw it, I said, you know, at this point of our lives, with the industry, with the congestion on the roads, you know, the objective here is a safer driver, less traffic on the road, less congestion. We had the opportunity to bid on it and buy it, and we ended up buying it from the previous construction company. And with that being said, I won't bore you, we, I'm sure you guys know at least what the property looked like, the disarray that it was in. There was much debris that was either in the buildings, and the buildings were dilapidated, and certainly the couple thousand square feet of debris that was outside, and partially in the wetlands. We purchased it in one form, just to do exactly what we are. We are lucky enough to have Latticrete International, which is our customer here. They're based out of Bethany, Connecticut, and that's where their world headquarters is, that certainly employs thousands of people here in Connecticut and all over the world. We worked out a deal with them that we wanted to be able to move their material. They confronted us, we were doing work for them. I'm in the transportation business, I haul powdered cement and sand, and we used to truck this, and it came out of Canada, it came out of parts of New Jersey, down by Vineland, New Jersey, down in the Dividing Creek area. And it's, it was a 10-hour, 12-hour, 15-hour, 16-hour trip to do these trips. We decided to purchase this, knowing the fact that rail is coming back and rail will come back. And the material that we are hauling is sand. One comes out of Canada, one comes out of New Jersey. At the end of the day, it is strictly our yard, there's no other carriers coming in and out of this yard. And we, and we, as we, as my attorney said earlier, we had about 157 or so cars come in since the beginning of the year, which represents about three to four truckloads per day. So I may have a truckload come in at 6:00 or 7:00 in the morning, and another truck may not come in until 7:00, excuse me, until 11:00 or 12:00, or 2:00 or 3:00, and they come in sporadically. There's no rhyme or reason to when, it's just depending on how my customer looks for the product. We do also load these trucks and we bring them back to our main yard because this yard is only a daytime operation. So we will have trucks loaded for our customer because they run 24/7. So we will keep material in our main yard in North Branford in order to service them overnight, and then start at 6:00 o'clock in the morning if needed, or 7:00 or 8:00. So there's, the cars come in on the spur. We get service approximately two to three days a week from Providence Ooster. The driver comes in, comes in, turns around, pulls underneath the conveyor, and it's about a 12- to 15- to 18-minute load process, and closes up his hatch, and he's on his way. And that's, you know, besides him doing that, as Mr. San Viva said, we do do maintenance on the conveyor, we do cut the field, we cut the grass, we, you know, mulch the front, all that kind of stuff. So most of it is done, and I have some pictures, if you don't have them, of what it looks like, if you haven't seen it, what the conveyor does, how it does it. The material comes out of the bottom of the railcars, they have two doors on them, drops down onto a platform, which is the conveyor. It's all, the conveyor's all enclosed, so you can't see any of the material, it can't spill out of the conveyor, goes up the conveyor on a rubber belt and drops into the top of the trailer. There's a scale on my conveyor, and in 15, 12 to 15 to 18 minutes, he's got 25 ton of material. There's 100 ton per railcar, so four trucks per railcar. There's, there's not ever going to be any other material in this yard but sand, and that's what it was designated for, just this particular sand that we are getting from different parts of the country and Canada. You know, we, we take really great pride, oh yeah, they're, as I said earlier, this is a daytime operation. So there's no, there's no truck parking overnight, there's no trucks being stored there, there's no trailers being stored there, there's no drivers leaving their car there and getting, you know, getting in a truck and parking their truck at the end of the day, getting in a car and going home. Trucks all go back to the main terminal in North Branford. And on Saturdays, most Saturdays, we don't work, but sometimes we like to have the opportunity to load a few cars, excuse me, a few trailers, in order to be able to start our Sunday deliveries out of North Branford to go to Latticrete International. You know, we, we take great pride, my family and I, and my wife and I started this business to, you know, to be good neighbors, to do the right thing. We're very, as you see, what the property did look like to what it is today even, and the cleanliness of the property, and certainly what we want to propose, to put a nice historical little rail, I say a little rail depot, it's just a little building that, it's a rail design building. It's historical to, I think, Wallingford, to some of the previous buildings that were there, the front, one of the front buildings was a little bit of a historical building or looked historical rail siding, with an office, as I said, in order to get my employee out of the elements. Right now, he's in the elements, or he has to sit in his car when he's up there. The, the, I'm not sure if you have any other questions, but that's kind of my operation. It's really, it's a couple hours a day, we like to open it to, you know, it's.
I think one of the things we wanted to point out to the commission, I know was a concern of your planner, was that this business couldn't expand. And that as a practical matter, I wanted Mr. Palumbo also to explain how having the one client, there is this just one customer, there are no other customers, the number of truck trips, the number of the hours of operation, none of this would expand. You're at, you have the one client and that's the only one customer this site can serve.
Correct. Right. It's not open to other customers, it's not open to the public, it's not open to other trucking companies, it's not open to other vendors to be able to come in, it's dedicated solely for Latticrete International and their needs, so.
And I think, Mr. Chairman, if I might, you know, again, this has been a, it's had the railroad spur. There's a gentleman here from the railroad to speak during the public hearing section of this application. And I think that the reason there was such a significant number of letters in favor that were read earlier as part of the record, is that this site, you see what it was, you see what it was before, how it appears now. And I wanted to make sure, because I know I've had many discussions with Mrs. Hand, we talk often about many things, but, you know, this was not an effort to snub our thumbs at our nose at the commission or the rules and regulations. But at the end of the day, that's why, again, one of the reasons that the railroad is here, our understanding was that the operation, it happens primarily, not exclusively, on the railroad property, that the railroad spur is there, the conveyor connects to the railroad cars, Dave explained to you, and so that it was exempt from the zoning regulations. As a matter of fact, I couldn't find, maybe Mrs. Hand has it, any approvals for some of the prior nonconforming uses, a changed use over years. And I think all of them were primarily associated with the railcar, at least that's the railroad and the railcars, the railroad spur, that's what we've heard from some of the neighbors who have told us a little bit about the history. Interestingly, some of the members of the Wetlands Commission were familiar with the history and gave us some of that background. So it is a site that is not conducive to being used, it's just an office building. This is, it's a railroad site. And one of the reasons that I think the neighbors are pleased is because it now is an attractive location. Mr. Palumbo hopes with your consent to make it even more attractive with the new building. And I'm just going to have Marcus bring up to you an offer as an exhibit, sort of the colored rendering from our architect that shows what's being proposed, what that building will look like should this be approved. Thank you.
Is that the extent of your presentation?
I think so.
If you would, I was going to go to Mrs. Hand before I went to any commission members for questions, but before I do that, if you could give us your thoughts as far as, you know, this use, a nonconforming use being less intense than the existing nonconforming use, because again, that's part of our regulations where the use would have to be, you know, less intense, we're at least at the same level. So if you could please give your thoughts on that.
The previous use, and perhaps you can offer some of those pictures, you'll see the New Haven partitions, they used it for a construction yard. They had, they used all the buildings that were there, there were several buildings before, now it's one, that's less intensive. There was a number of pieces of equipment, there's a picture of a backhoe.
There was backhoes on this property, bulldozers on this property, the man lifts that you use on construction sites, the chutes that go up into 40, 50 square, 40 or 50-story buildings, they have all those chutes that came down. There was material, steel studs, stored outside. Inside, they had all kinds of construction debris and things that they would bring in and out, staging and et cetera.
In addition, I'll offer this as exhibit, Mr. Chairman. In addition, again, we have one part-time employee, works about 20 to 25 hours at the site, other than the truck drivers who are there periodically. So again, in terms of impact of existing, the prior, the prior nonconforming uses, there was, again, it was an ongoing activity with crews, and we don't store anything on the site. The actual storage occurs on the railroad property, that's where the storage of the goods are. We simply take the transloading and leave the site as soon as it's completed. I'll offer this also. It shows, again, some of the dilapidated buildings in color, and it also shows some of the equipment that's on the site, if you don't mind.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I guess at this point, I'd like to go to our town planner, Mrs. Hand. Certainly, there's volumes of information that goes with this application. I know you've had substantial discussion with the applicant. Perhaps if you could bring us kind of up to date where we are and how this, you know, the application began.
Sure. So I had a meeting with the property owner, with Mr. Palumbo and a colleague of his in 2014, where they inquired about this use on the property. And at that time, I explained to them that the existing use was a nonconforming use, which is the issue before you today, essentially, that the existing use was a nonconforming use, that our zoning regulations don't currently have a allowance for a transload facility. And so it wouldn't be a permitted use in the zone, this is a CA 40 zone, so it's a light commercial zone. Typically, what's allowed here is like office, retail, some light restaurant, and it's surrounded by a residential area. It's a, it's not technically a spot zone, but it's a very, very small zone. So partially based, I think, because of the history of the property. So the use wouldn't be a permitted use in the zone. There was the option, which is the option being exercised tonight, because of the nonconformity on the property, to apply for a special permit to change from one nonconforming use to another, but that that nonconforming use, as you alluded to, has to be not more objectionable than the current nonconforming use. And I had some concerns based on the explanation as to whether that's, it would be deemed that way or not. In 2015, so that was, in 2015, we received a complaint about work being done on the property and the business being operated out of the property. So that kicked off a violation file in July, or no, I'm sorry, April of 2015. So that kicked off a violation file in July, or no, I'm sorry, April of 2015. So since that time, we've been trying to sort of get to this point so that the commission can make a decision about whether the use, whether the use is going to be permitted on the property or not. Because it's, so right now, it's sort of a longstanding, relatively longstanding zoning violation. Certainly, there are, there have been improvements made to the property. I absolutely would agree that there have been improvements made to the property. The buildings were in pretty rough shape, which I think, again, speaks to the perhaps intensity of what was occurring on the site. I did look into the history of the building a little bit. So the property was actually under the same ownership from 1949 until 2005, it was owned by Mr. Frazina until 2005. And then it did not change ownership again until it was bought by Mr. Plumb in 2011. It had various forms of the same ownership during that time. There are no approvals on file, so it's basically a grandfathered use that predates zoning. So the only approved use is, sort of dates back to Mr. Frazina, and it was classified at least back to 2000 as commercial warehousing. So that's the use that's been sort of classified on the property. And I think over the years, I mean, the notes sort of indicate back in 2009, the buildings are, become boarded up, they sort of become run down, and my understanding of what was occurring on the property was rather limited by that point. So what's before you now is the special permit to change it from one non-conforming use to another. The question, as I mentioned, is really, is this use not, the way the regulation reads is that, is the use not more objectionable than the existing grandfathered use? So I think that the attorney, Senaviva, and Mr. Plumb discussed some of the operational sort of components on the record tonight. So I think that really the, if the commission is inclined, I think that is inclined to approve the application or to consider this use, I think that the important thing is that, as Ms. Attorney Senaviva alluded to, that there be restrictions put on it that clearly define for the property owner and for the town, and for the residents of the area, that clearly define what happens on the property, what can be allowed to happen on the property. A non-conforming use cannot intensify, so it can't intensify, it can't expand. So whatever, we're kind of taking this snapshot in time, or potentially taking this snapshot in time to say, okay, here's what's allowed, here's the new non-conforming use, and then that would be it. I did also speak with the rail line at one point, and they were not willing to cooperate with us, so I think that we need to make sure that the, that the conditions, again, are clear for the property. So we talked about things like numbers of trucks, they've provided you with some information about what that looks like. I think, I'm not sure if this got touched on, but there are no left turns currently allowed out of the property, I think that would remain as a condition of approval, I think they're willing to agree to that, there's already a sign on the property to that effect. So I think those are the kinds of things that we want to make sure are very, very clear, if, again, if the commission is inclined to determine that, if the commission feels that it's a not more objectionable use. I think one thing that is important to talk about is hours of operation in terms of the use and the area. Your noise ordinance is seven, is, starts at 7:00 AM, or daytime hours under the noise ordinance start at 7:00 AM typically with uses that are near residences, when it's a special permit, you use the noise ordinance as kind of a minimum guideline, so that may be something worth considering. We talked about, or they talked about no overnight trucks, no overnight truck parking. You might want to also talk about whether or not trucks are allowed to idle during the day, I'm not sure if that has had an impact on residents or not in the area. So I mean, I think that's really the question is, because primarily, this is a truck use, so what impact do those trucks have on the property? Office is a permitted use in the CA zone, so if it was just a proposal for an office building, we wouldn't be here, we'd just be here as a site plan application. So I think that's, that's sort of the big question generally, and that's really what you're deciding in the special permit tonight. So I think there need to be, if you are inclined to move forward, I think there need to be some clear conditions on the record. And it is the commission's purview, it is a special permit, especially given the nature of this type of special permit to impose conditions. Those could be the conditions laid out in this sort of operational summary, I'll call it, or you could modify those conditions as you see appropriate. Site design, all of my site design comments have generally been addressed, and I spoke with engineering and water and sewer, they all, as long as their comments were made, conditions of approval, we're comfortable with the design. There are two things that I want to bring up that weren't a hundred percent addressed for me. The first is the building elevations. I just want to make sure they're actually consistent with what's going to be built in the sense of the first floor, especially, I think that's going to be a garage space. I think it shows one bay door, is that correct? Okay, okay. And then the roof, I think I mentioned this to Attorney Senaviva, it seemed very steep. So I'm just, one of my recommended conditions is that the elevations be provided with updated height information so I can make sure that it complies with height restrictions. The other thing, which is probably a little more contentious, is the 25-foot landscaping in the front. That is not something we would normally make an exception for in a CA zone, and there is a separate regulation. So my understanding is that that's to be used as a loading area for, so basically, a truck can pull up into that area to be, to load. 6.11 F4 of the zoning regulations states that no loading space shall be located less than 20 feet from any property line or street line. So I think that that is potentially problematic. Other than that, like I said, my other design comments have generally been addressed. I did give you recommended conditions of approval if you're inclined to move forward tonight, including, and I think everybody's agreeable to this, that outdoor storage of material would not be allowed on the site, reference to the operational components and final architectures, architectures to be submitted.
Thank you, Mrs. Hand. And before I go to commission members for questions, my first question is just, I guess as our town planner indicated, this property had been a zoning violation for over four years. What's been the reason for not having that addressed when it was immediately brought attention to the applicant?
2015 is when it was noted as a zoning violation. I met with my client, with a representative of the railroad, I believe, was at that meeting, I think it was July of 2015, July 7th, and.
Right, after we had issued the violation notice.
Right, that's correct. And after that meeting, I remember having discussions with the town attorney, because the railroad had convinced my client, I'm not a railroad expert, I don't know railroad law, anyway, I don't know that, many others too, but that they were exempt and that the activity was occurring because, all on railroad properties, I said to you before, it's kind of interesting when you look at the property, you look at the property, it looks like it's a wide open property, and yet if you sort of put in your mind now the fact that 41 feet west from the spur is still railroad property, that the vast majority of the enterprise, all the railroad cars, all the sand storage is all on railroad property, the conveyor is on railroad property, it's the trucks that are on Mr. Plumb's property. So that they convinced my client, and that was what he was whispering to me, wanted to make sure that he told the commission that he wasn't, again, just trying to ignore Mrs. Hand and the town, but we did have discussions with the town attorney. I will tell you, with all due respect, there was no follow-up on any additional notices of violation. We did come forward in 2017 to talk again about that, I know Mrs. Hand was not happy. We've tried to do what we thought was the right thing, once it became clear that even the activity of the trucks being on 988 East Center Street required your approval, that we came in. And again, we came in in 2017, where we filed the application, actually in May of 2018, because we were doing the wetlands first, and it took us a year to get through that process. So it looks much longer than it was, frankly, but I'll just have Dave add on to that, to your question.
So when I bought the property, I had this in mind to do. We went to the town back in 11 or 12, and at that time. Linda Bush was there and had said to us, well, you can put a commercial building, you could put a couple of houses there, really wasn't sure about the property, wasn't sure, you know, what the spur was, the line, and we talked about it was Providence Worcester, the spur's been there, it's been a rail yard since the mid-1800s, obviously it had been in and out of use with rail, and then into construction or cabinet building, then to construction to me. So I said to myself, well, I don't want to build houses, I'm not a house builder, nobody's going to want to put two houses on this lot, on railroad spur, and the railroad owns 41 or 42 feet off the track. So I kind of, quite frankly, left there with my tail between my legs and saying, well, now what do I do? And we sat on the property for probably several months, almost a year, and my safety director said, well, why don't we just call the railroad and see if they're interested in buying the piece, what are we going to do with it? So we called the railroad, railroad sent a representative down, and from that point forward, they said, yes, you can operate on the railroad property, you can do this transload, they're all over the country, I've seen them all over the country, I've worked out of them myself in different areas in the transportation field, and I don't want to totally blame the railroad because I just was going under their guidelines of what they told me, you know, I'm on railroad property, okay, you know, in so many words, if, you know, if every town said no to the railroad, the railroad wouldn't exist, so, you know, no, you don't want to be a bad neighbor and say, we're going to bring hazardous waste in here, or you're going to be bringing in things that could, you know, essentially not be conducive to the neighborhood, but you're bringing in sand. So we're going to support that, you can do it. And we then proceeded to start doing very little activity at the time because we were new to the industry, new to the railroad industry, and had partnered with them over the last four or so years now, or at least three and a half, four anyways there. And until, actually, my wife came to the town, because we didn't hear anything after that, I hired Mr. Senaviva, and we went to the town because the little building that's there now, that little garage, we wanted to put electric in it, you know, maybe some heat in there so my guy could get out of the weather. And that's when this all came back up again, and Dennis and I started saying, well, you know, we have to start figuring out what we have to do with the town. If it's, if it's an issue, then we got to correct the issue. If it's partly railroad and partly mine, well, we have to figure out how do we combat that so we satisfy the town's needs and we can also operate with the railroad on railroad property. And that's where that went.
Thank you. At this point in time, commission members with questions for the applicant? Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any of you three up here tonight, did any of you have any involvement with the property before it was purchased by Mr. Plumb in 2011?
Guthrie Hoffman had done a survey in 2008 and had prepared plans for the previous owner for a large, or a reasonably large retail building there, which never moved forward. So that is basically the reason we have a 2008 survey, but that was the limit of our involvement.
Okay. During the course of your involvement in preparing those plans, did you become familiar with how intense the use was of that property at that time?
No, I personally wasn't involved either.
Fair enough.
Several employees ago.
Okay, fair enough. And how about Mr. Plumb or Attorney Senaviva, were either of you ever personally involved with the use being made of that property prior to Mr. Plumb's purchase in 2011?
No. As far as, did I have any involvement on the property?
Yeah.
No.
Okay, fair enough.
You know, obviously I live in Northford, so I get on the highway there dozens of times a month, and been watching that property for probably 20 years, that's my involvement.
Fair enough. The, Attorney Senaviva, would you agree that as the applicant, the applicant has the burden of proof to show that the use being proposed is less objectionable than the prior use?
Or no more objectionable?
No more objectionable.
Yes. And that's why, if I might, to follow up on that, that's why we've offered, you know, the information, which I think is uncontroverted about the prior use, that the reason we submitted the pictures was to show you the number of buildings, to show you the equipment that was there, to show you the size of the operation. Mr. Plumb, who bought it from the previous party who used it as a partition, a warehousing and construction company, spoke to that, we can put him under oath, but again, that's his testimony that the prior use prior to his ownership was certainly much more substantial than the operation that he proposes or actually is operating.
Okay, and I appreciate, I appreciate that, I would also add that you have some letters from various neighbors. But I'm not sure if there's neighbors here tonight, so I'm going to, you know, I'll wait to hear if any neighbors have anything to say tonight about the prior use. I guess the other question I would have through you, Mr. Chairman, to the town planner, the fact that the current owner has cleaned up the property and cleaned up some of those old buildings, does that, does that factor into the analysis as to whether the use is no more objectionable than the prior use?
No, I mean, the application presumably would have been presented before any of that happened anyhow, so, and either way, I mean, it's nice that he has cleaned up the property, but no, it has no bearing on the guidance or the requirements under the special permit change.
The, I thought it was mentioned earlier that trucks, your hours of operation. The, I thought it was mentioned earlier that trucks, their hours of operation are from approximately 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Did I hear that correctly? The, our noise ordinance does not allow that type of activity until 7:00 AM. Is that a problem for you?
No. If it has to be seven, then we can adjust and make it seven.
I don't think I have any further questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Other commission members. Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My questions are going to be around the train. And as far as the, and I don't know train law either, so I'm with you there. But in the previous operation, was that train traffic more or less intensive than it is now?
Well, this has always been an active rail line.
Right.
It's always been active from the infancy of this railroad and it's changed hands over many a times and I'm sure there's, we can find out how many railroads have changed. But it's always been an active rail line and it's always been an active spur that people or the railroad has been using, whether it's for storage of equipment, equipment that they use on the tracks. In the first year or two, the first year while we were essentially left the town hall with our tail between our legs saying, what are we going to do with this property? There was a lot of activity on that spur going on with the railroad. There was widening of the trees coming down the tracks. There's always work being done on the tracks and there is a rep from the railroad here that probably can enlighten more of what they do.
Well, yeah, that's really not the question I asked is, I mean, your activity, I'm over there all the time. I do a lot of running over that way. I've been in my car when the train is stopped there at the tracks. And quite honestly, over the last couple of months, I've run under the trestle while the train is going over. In previous years, I've never, ever experienced that while I've been out running that way. So it seems to me that.
Going overhead?
The overpass down Tamara Swamp Road.
Oh, down at the next exit.
Yeah, your train's coming in. It's, so where I'm going with that is your operation is actually doing more traffic, train, rail traffic than had been done on this site in the past.
Well, there's multiple customers on that line, not just myself. Tilcon is probably four times the size of us. And there's Permitry, there's Red Tech, there's Clockler Metals, there's about seven other lines or spurs on that going up. Referring back to the overpass, I'm not, we don't have an overpass at ours and you're saying the trains are backed up down to.
Yeah, forget about that. It's coming in. So my point is that for your site, the site we're talking about, I'm getting at the not more objectionable issue here, is that in the past, that train did not service this site as much as it is going to do now and is currently doing now. So I'm getting at the not more objectionable.
Yeah, they service the site two to three times a week or whenever I need them to. But they're going through that twice, probably twice a day and there's a rep here that tells you how much time does they go by.
So it is more intensive now than what you previously did at the site?
We're working there about two hours a day in a 12-hour period.
Right. So the, I guess overriding question and I, you know, I don't know who has jurisdiction over this. Typically when we do, you know, a motion, there's comments from the fire marshal. And, you know, that train has stopped at that track and I was, you know, stopped there the other day and it took five or 10 minutes to clear the tracks. So, you know, and I think somebody referenced it in a letter here, but, you know, if there was an emergency and that train was there, they'd have to go around, you know, up North Airline and back through. You know, is that something that, you know, the railroad is exempt from, you know, having to deal with, you know, our fire department? Or is that something we need to ask the fire department to weigh in on?
If I were to answer the question.
I think we're waiting for an answer.
Yeah, it's okay. The confusion on my part is this.
Excuse me, if you just let our town planner please comment.
That's okay, because I'm not 100% sure of the answer either. I mean, all I can say is they, as you said, they normally comment on applications. They didn't comment on this one, which leads me to believe that they didn't have, either they don't have an objection or they don't have jurisdiction. And I do know that the line itself, the rail line itself is typically not subject to local jurisdiction. I mean, typically there's input by the local jurisdiction. So like when we, with the new high-speed rail, there was, we provided input to that, but ultimately it wasn't subject to local jurisdiction. I don't know if that's different when it comes to like public safety or emergency responders.
So, you know, I think for me, before we, you know, move forward on this, and I just want to say, I think, you know, your use of the railroad is, you know, impressive. I've always said, there's too many, you know, tractor trailers on the road. We ought to go back to the railroad.
Yeah, we're talking about, we're going to take about 1,000 to 1,200 truckloads off the highways by using the railroad. And just back to your comment was whether they stop at us or not, the train goes by and they don't, there may be days or a week may go by that they don't even service us because we don't have any activity per se. So the train's going no matter what, whether it stops at us or not, just so you understand that.
But, you know, again, the, you know, train will stop there, you know, the crossing will be down. So to finish my thought, I just want to make sure the, you know, the fire marshal is aware of, you know, this potential and, you know, weighs in one way or another before we proceed. Oh, okay. Is that?
I think that was passed out this evening.
Oh, is it 2B?
Yeah, V from the fire marshal, correct?
Yeah, attachment 2B.
Yeah. And that was given to us this evening, correct? I believe it was.
No, I think 2B was in the file already.
And the fire marshal indicated he had no comment.
Okay. So, yeah, it looks like, yes, so they did comment and that they had, they were okay with the site if changed to building on site. If there's a change to the building on site, they'll need plans. That's kind of a standard comment. So they didn't comment about the rail component of it.
Okay. So, you know, I'd like to see him comment on the rail, you know, component. And then I had a question on, you know, the tractor trailers. I've seen the operation and it looks like it's just a dump truck that is being loaded. And he mentioned it was a tractor trailer.
It's a tanker. It's a dry bulk sand trailer. So it's just like the railcar that comes in, but on a trailer. It's the same concept enclosed.
No, for the transport of the sand, once it gets offloaded.
Right. It's in a, it's in a, it's in a dry bulk sand trailer.
Okay. So it is a tractor trailer?
Yes.
Special tractor trailer?
Yeah, it's a tanker.
Not an open?
Not an open top where, you know, you can't have any spillage from the railcar to the conveyor to the truck. It's all contained. The railcar's contained, goes onto the conveyor, then into the, into the tank.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzsimmons, I believe you had some comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think from the letter of August 29th that the town planner sent to you, the first point of the whole letter, to paraphrase, but you have it there, it's the letter from Mrs. Hand on August 29th. It says, "The property is located in a CA zone." Okay, so I want to confirm from the map I'm looking at, your map up there, it's totally surrounded by residential. Are we in agreement on that?
There's, yeah, some farms.
The south is farm, but.
Yeah, there's farms across.
Yeah, but it's all residential use in the area, right? Because then the application is to change from one non-conforming use to another and the regulations only allow such change when the proposed use is no more objectionable, looking at the zoning, no more objectional in character, and then the legally existing non-conforming use. Her letter goes on to say, "Distribution facilities while not permitted in the CA zone are also typically only permitted in any zone as part of a warehouse facility where warehousing is permitted and are generally considered fairly high in intensity." So I'm getting to a question here. This is where I'm stuck. I'm stuck in the first point of her letter. I would not disagree because I know you had, we've received, you know, 28 letters from people who said, "The place looks better." It does look better. There's no question and thank you for buying it and cleaning it. The chairman noted, and you were very candid, I think, that why you're only here tonight versus a couple of years ago. The challenge for us is, and forgive me, but I'm going to give you a comparison. Okay, somebody buys a piece of property that looks awful. And this is an analogy that I want to open a restaurant someday, so I'm going to open up a restaurant, I'm going to fix up that property, I'm going to open a restaurant. It's going to be successful, then I'll come before the town. Because that's where we are in the process. You've done everything and now you're here and you're asking us to approve what you've already done. You're asking us to, you know, and again, as I said, the neighbors have already said how great it looks and I would agree. I would send a letter too, saying it looks great. The problem is, the problem is the use is what we're talking about, not how it looks, it's the use. I happen to have, remember Peter Frazina who's since passed? I remember what it looked like when he owned. I remember visiting him more than one occasion at this particular parcel, much like, Mr. Cohen, through that intersection often, I see it, you know? So it is interesting and a big one, I support the rails, I think it's all great. The challenge for us is zoning. And the zoning question is, is it more or less? My answer is it's more. And that's a problem for me because you're applying for a special permit and the special permit is only allowed if it's not more. So that's my off-the-cuff after hearing what you've talked about and hearing, you know, I just want to let you know that's where I'm leaning based upon what I've heard. I applaud what you're trying to do, but I think part of the challenge is while rail is great, the problem is the trucks. Because the trucks are all going through residential zone to get to your parcel. So I know if I understood correctly and having seen the operation over the last couple of months, years, the trucks are yours. They all have your name on them. Is that correct? So you control the trucks, much like Walmart controls their trucks. Where do the trucks go? Like, how do they get to your site and that, this particular site? How do they get off the site? Because the only entrance to 91 is northbound. Otherwise, they have to go through Airline Road to get down to the southbound. And I don't know, because you said your client is in Bethany. So I'm trying to figure out the truck route to get to this particular site.
Bethany, they get on the highway at the entrance of 14 and go north to 691 and 8 or down. Or they'll go back up and then come back down 91 and go to my shop in North Branford because not all the deliveries blend up at Latticree every given day.
So they're going both, they're going both 91 north and 91 south?
Correct.
And the only, the entrance that's closest to you is 91 north.
Correct.
The 91 south is East Center Airline, South Airline. Yeah, it just.
No, no, just for clarity, I think he's not explaining it correctly. No, no trucks go anywhere but north on I-91. When they go south, they turn around 691 and go south or they go to another location. They don't use the I-91 south entrance off of South Airline. They only use, they only leave the site and they take a right and go north.
All right. Let me share with you. My son's play hockey, we're at Northford 18 times a week. How would you get to North Branford, Northford from there by going up north 91? That's why I'm questioning the traffic, the truck traffic from your site to get back to your place.
So they'll either go 91 north and come around back down south, get off exit.
Come around where?
91. They'll go up to the next exit, come around, or they'll go down, take a left at, and I don't know the name of the road. I'm sorry?
The farm.
The farm, where the farm is. Off of Centers, off of East Center Street.
No, that's no through trucks there. You got to go farther down. You got to go down to 150.
That's why.
To there. Otherwise, we get on 91 north because you can't go left out of our property because there's no through trucks and we'll go up and either get on 8 and go down 691.
The reason I ask is because you talk about the truckloads per day and thank you for clarifying that because I, that's, you know, the truck trips in generation of this, that kind of speaks to me to the intensity or the non-conforming use is no more objectional in character. Because prior use, you know, and again, as I said, I don't recall, and I've been in town a lot of years, I don't recall truck traffic generating from that site. I don't, you know, so again, I applaud you for cleaning it up. I applaud you for trying to make it legal in the eyes of zoning. I must share with you though, on that particular question, I can't get past point one of the letter. I do think it's more intense use than what was there.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. Again, I would, I think Mr. Fitzsimmons raised some very good points as far as the truck traffic and candidly, that's one of the issues that when I first looked at this and I suspect other commission members, you know, looking this as far as what's, is the site being more intense, the use, or equal or less intense? And that's, you know, that's something that I guess I'm still struggling with.
And I think the letters, excuse me, I'm sorry to cut you off. I think the letters don't just represent the cleanliness or the beauty of the property. It also comments on a lot of these letters as to people like the rail yard, people like to see that activity. People would rather see that particular activity because it's been a quote-unquote railroad yard since the mid 1800s, rather than seeing a multi-story office complex there with hundreds of cars back and forth through the neighborhoods.
Again, I appreciate that. But again, what we're faced with is from a zoning standpoint. Does it comply with the zoning regulations or does it not comply? Again, as Mr. Fitzsimmons pointed out, I think everybody here will certainly give you a good deal of credit for cleaning the site up from what it was. But it comes down to, from a zoning standpoint, does it meet the zoning regulations or not? Before I got to the property, I do have, just to maybe follow up a little bit on Mr. Cohen's questions. When a, when a train comes in to drop off the sand, how many cars? Is that just a train for you or are those cars attached to another train? How does that, how does the delivery work and how many cars are there?
I might only have one car delivered, but the train, whether they come to me or not, that's what I was explaining.
No, no, I understand the train. I mean, Mr. Cohen's very athletic. He runs. I ride my bike through there. So there's been many times where on a railroad crossing farther down, where I've counted probably 80 cars, 80 train cars that have, you know, come across the.
I couldn't tell you how many because.
No, no, I'm not asking. When you're receiving a delivery of sand, is that a separate train that brings the sand or are those cars with your sand attached to a train?
They're attached to that particular train.
Okay. So they're attached to the train?
Correct.
Okay. And then how long does the cars, how long?
And then how long does, the cars, how long, if you receive, I guess four cars? Most of the time when I go out there, there's probably four or five train cars, cars that are there. When a car is delivered, or multiple cars are delivered, how long does it take to unload all of those cars and then have them moved out? And then new, you know, a new delivery for you?
How long does it take the railroad to do it?
Yeah, exactly. I'm trying to get an understanding, how long the cars actually sit there?
It's probably a question for the rep that's here. But it's, I mean, they, they obviously don't block the intersection.
Oh, no, I understand that.
They drop, and it could take, and I don't really know. I mean, it could take 15 minutes, 20 minutes for them to drop, bring my car in, and either pick up a car or not. And again, I think that's probably a question for the rep that's actually here.
But again, there's multiple cars that are out there all the time. I take it those cars are always in some process of either being unloaded, or they're empty, and you're waiting for the railroad to pick them up? Is that correct? And you're just...
Yeah, they're either delivering a particular sand car or picking up an empty car. So they'll do it at the same time. They'll drop a car and pick up a car. There's days, as I said, that there's no use there. There's no traffic there whatsoever, because we don't have any use to go to the yard. There's days that the railroad doesn't deliver to us for one, two, maybe three days. Depends on the usage of Lata Creek.
Are there any times when there's no rail cars at your site?
No, there's primarily always cars. There could be one or two cars. There could be four.
In a roundabout way, that was the point I was trying to...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, it's not you. I don't think it was probably very clear. But anyway, if any other commission members have any questions? Mrs. Hand, any observations before I go out to the public?
Just a question, if I could, through the chair. Do you know what the square footage of the buildings was on the site when he bought it?
I don't know. Not off the top of my head. I could calculate it, but we could probably figure that out.
Okay.
There was three other buildings, well, there was four buildings total on that property. There's now existing one.
Okay, so it looks like an 800, a 20, sorry, I realized I have it. An 800, a 2300, a smaller kind of storagy thing at 900. And I think that's it. Okay, so that's, just to kind of...
What was the square footage you came up with?
So there was an 800 square foot building, which I think is the one that's still there. Does that sound right? No, there was an 800 square foot building. There was a 2300 square, 2,326 square feet. And 942, which I think that one is the existing one still.
That is the existing one.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So that comes out to about 4,000, is that correct? If my math is right, or...
23, yeah, about 4,000.
Thank you.
So just to put that kind of in context for, so if that was previous warehousing, storage, just to kind of, I thought that might help put it in context in terms of what we're comparing it to, because we are thinking of it, I think a lot of us in our minds, in terms of like the boarded-up, not-used buildings. And I think it's important to keep in mind that the grandfathering would be for an active use there.
I think that's a fair point to bring up. At this point in time, this is a public hearing. Are there members of the public who'd like to speak on the application? Again, can I just have a show of hands, who'd like to speak? Okay, we're going to start with this gentleman, then we're going to go off to the right and go farther to the right. So again, name and address, sir, if you would, please.
Edward Mathias, 17 North Airline Road. We're right across the street. We've lived in this house since 1984. Growing up, I used to chase the train up and down the track after school, and only came by maybe once or twice during the summer. Since this started operating, the traffic's atrocious. People come, cut through North Airline to get around it. There have been times my neighbor's battling cancer, he couldn't be here. He's made a noise complaint prior to 4:00 a.m., between 4:00 and 5:00, for them operating the facility. And it's just, you know, you asked about what it's like. It's definitely more. In all my time there, I've never seen anybody unloading and loading. Sure, the train came by every day, but we have trains idling for 35, 40 minutes while they're moving the train cars back and forth. My parents are retired, not well, and I'm sure I'm not the only one in the neighborhood that has this issue. And I will, last thing I will say, 12 years ago, we came before the board to get approval prior to doing something. We didn't ask for forgiveness later.
Thank you, sir. And again, we don't need any clap. On this side of the room, please show a hands. We'll take this, we're going to go with this young lady, and then you'll be the next. Oh, yes, you're up. I'm sorry. You're the young lady.
I'm the young lady.
There you go.
I'm Carol Borsari at 30 Strawberry Hill. And I have a concern about the line of sight of the cars parked on the track. I cross there many times a day. And when you come up to the track, if you're coming from the center of town, across the tracks towards Mackenzie Res, there's, you cannot, you cannot see down the track. It's a safety hazard. You have to be on the track to literally see if there was an oncoming train. So I'm wondering, and I made a call to a state coordinator for Operation Lifesaver, which I celebrate Wallingford. And they have tips on highway and rail grade crossings for safety. And he, and I may be wrong, it was my understanding from him that the property is private property, and that the cars were under, were under the private property. But from what I'm hearing now, it might be a railroad. They might be owning the, in control of the cars on the spur. So my concern is the safety, the line of sight that's poor. And I'd like to see that the cars are at least pushed back so that there was a line of sight for oncoming trains. And I was looking at your criterion for evaluation of a special permit. Under Section B1C, it states, and I quote, "That the commission shall consider the capacity of adjacent streets to handle peak traffic loads and hazards created by use." I think this is a hazard. The use of this is creating a hazard, especially for safety reasons with those cars. But if the positioning and the placement of them was changed, that would certainly help. So I'm asking that you consider that. Maybe it would be a contingency if you pass this approval. And again, can anybody answer and help me understand who has the jurisdiction of the placement of those cars?
Mrs. Hand, would you, I suspect it would be the railroad. It's their property. And again, as it was mentioned, correct me if I'm wrong, they own from the west side of the rails, it's approximately 45 feet. Is that correct? So when you're looking at the rails west of that, is the railroad property, which is 45 feet?
And that's why I'm confused, because when I spoke to the state coordinator, he told me that it was, the spur was on private property, private property and under their control. So I was wondering if they controlled the placement of the cars.
No, I think the gentleman, I'm not sure who you spoke with, but I believe the gentleman that you spoke with probably misspoke, or may not have been fully aware of this particular property.
Well, my concern again is for safety, and if the commission would consider what they could do to make that not a hazard to safety with the placement of the cars.
Good enough, fair point. Thank you. And yes, this lady here?
Angie Conti, 26 North Airline Road. I'm the house right next to the wetlands. So if you turn on East Center, I'm the first house on the right. I'm wondering a couple of things. First, I can concur with Mr. Batista over there. I've lived at my house since 2004, and the train used to only come once or twice a day. It comes all the time now. As Jamie can attest, I'm at the gym by 5:00 o'clock every day. And I have also seen train activity way before 6:00 o'clock as I'm leaving the house to get to spin class at 5:15. So I've listened to Mr. Palumbo and his attorney, and there's lots of things they said that are just not true. And I'm concerned, because they've already been a little shady with doing things and then applying for the permit. So I understand when Ms. Hand says, "You can't expand." But are you going to be able to make sure they abide by that? Because I don't trust that they're going to come in here and not try and get bigger. They've already done things without a permit. They've cleaned up and pushed into the wetlands. And that's why they're here now, because they got caught. Not because they're good neighbors and they want to make sure they are doing things right. They got caught, and we all know that. Also, there is spillage when they have their stuff put into their car. There's no mulch. And when I lived there in 2004, whoever owned it before, used to mow the field, and they mow it too. But they also used to take care of the overgrowth that now is all in my yard. I've called the Palumbo office and asked them if they would take care of that. And I've been yes to death, and it's never happened. So I don't trust that they're going to do the things that they say. I also am curious as to what addresses those letters they got are from. Why didn't you ask me for a letter? I'm right next door. Wouldn't I have the best view to tell you how beautiful it is? Because it's not that beautiful, because that's not a big deal. So I think you need to look at the addresses of those letters. I bet you they're from all the way at the end of North Airline Road, where they're close to Williams Road. And those people don't care what happens on our end of the road, because they don't go there unless they're going on 91 to go to work. So let's be clear that this reeks. And let's see all the shadiness for what it is, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. And before I go more to this side, I believe, was there someone on the left side that wanted to speak? Yes, we'll go to this lady, and then also the gentleman next door.
Good evening. Colleen Auger.
Name your address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. 29 Audet Drive in Wallingford.
Thank you.
I've been renting the farm across the street from the train where all of this is happening. And I'd just like to say, I know the board, you spoke about the intensity and increasing the intensity. And yes, there is more activity across the street, and it's welcome. That has been dilapidated, overrun, and a mess. And just a site, a sore eye site for years. Yes, the train still comes through all the time. It's no more than it ever was. I have cattle there. I'm there all the time. And I tell you what, I welcome what this man is doing for that site. And I think it's going to be a great thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Tim Comstock. I live at 29 Audet also. I'm at the farm at quarter or five every morning. There is not a lot of traffic across the street, because the only thing that there is a police officer most mornings. So there is not activity there, like these people are saying. The gentleman actually does a good job there. Not a lot of noise. I think that everybody else is complaining about nonsense, to be honest with you. So I give him all the credit in the world.
Thank you, sir. And I believe this gentleman?
I know. Town plan 32 North Airline Road. I'm the second house on the right on the road. You know, I don't want to repeat a lot of things that people have said, but I have a lot of the same, similar concerns. Some of the things I'm concerned about, right on their website, if you look at it, they're advertising fly ash, cement, things that, if you do some research online, these things are containing, you know, pollutants, heavy metals. And as stated before, I see the stuff on the ground. It's being spilled out of their conveyor belt as it's being loaded in. And there's a lot on the ground, like, and you're talking about drainage for only 25-year storms? Well, you know, you're talking about potential for, you know, environmental impacts that I'm very concerned about, that kind of was brushed over lightly. But who's to say that they're not getting a train in of something other than sand? Like, who's in charge of monitoring that? Because as we said before, they haven't been very forthcoming. You know, the train activity has been definitely more intense. I've been there now three years. There's been a couple Sundays that are, you know, there's businesses now on that side of the town. There's parks, that, there's tournaments going on, things like that. 25, 30 minutes. This thing is being blocked off with idling trains going back and forth delivering cars on Sundays now. On Sundays, regularly now, they're getting deliveries. They're consistently there before 6:00 a.m., 100%. You can see the conveyor belt lights on. You know, the guy getting ready and doing all kinds of stuff with the trucks. And, sorry, I had a couple other things. You know, and another thing that I've been able to research about this company that was very concerning to me, they had a 2012 kind of lawsuit going on where two employees that used to work for them came forward about concerns of safety of equipment that they tried to essentially press charges against and, you know, go after to kind of, you know, I don't know what the real information of that case was, but they had two employees come forward about safety of equipment. And now you're talking about all these trucks that they own coming in and out every day, three to four a day, which it's more than that. There's definitely more than three to four trucks per day. And it's Sundays, they're getting deliveries of cars. And Saturdays, they're there past noon, definitely, more than one occasion. That's what I had to say.
Good enough. Thank you, sir. Other members of the public who would like to speak? Yes, sir, we'll go to you after this lady.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Pendleton. I live at 50 North Airline Road. I just wanted to ask a question. Has there been a traffic study or anything done, completed, to see when, like in the early morning hours, like when commute times? Because there's a lot of people that access 91 north. And I actually take that route and go 91 north to my job. Have, has there been any type of traffic study or any type of anything to look to see, like when trucks, if trucks do come, how they impact?
To answer that note, there hasn't been a traffic study. And one of the reasons is because the number of trucks that would, that would, you know, be generated from the site would certainly not reach the level of requiring a traffic study.
All right, just because the traffic, as it is sometimes coming, if someone's at Tamrac, you know, because that's a lot of people coming out, there's no light. If they're making the left, sometimes it can get kind of confusing because there's so much traffic going back. So it was just a concern that I had, living there. Also, too, I had a question about, how will things be enforced? Like, how does the town enforce that people are following the rules and following the guidelines? Like, what, is there like a set person that's like just for enforcing it? Do we have the bandwidth, the personnel with which to follow up?
Well, we have, we have a zoning enforcement officer. And I think Mrs. Hand probably can speak a little bit more on that. But to a very large degree, you know, enforcement is, is based upon people, you know, complaints that are received by the, you know, by the zoning officer or by other people in town. Clearly, if you look at all the properties that we have and all the different types of situations, you know, to have one or two people to go around and make sure that all zoning issues are complied with, I think in any town, that's certainly not something that's feasible. So I think it's fair to say that the majority of complaints, the majority of enforcement really deals with complaints that are being indicated to the planning department or with, you know, with various applications or with various uses, where there is a knowledge of a history of complaints or a history of violations, then our zoning enforcement officer would periodically check on those sites, I believe. And I guess I'd ask Mrs. Hand to perhaps comment just briefly a little bit more on that.
Yeah, so we have a zoning enforcement officer currently part-time. We're actually in the process of making that a full-time position, which is wonderful. The procedurally, and I do also fill in with some of the zoning enforcement. But essentially, that's the reason why, or that's one of the reasons why if the application were to go forward in some fashion, or that the operation were to get approved in some fashion, I want to make it very clear, make sure it's very clear on the record exactly what's approved. And that protects the town and the property owner and the neighbors. Because then if there is an issue, we have it clearly in writing. It makes it a lot easier for us to facilitate going forward. So usually what happens, there is a prescribed process, but usually there's a violation notice and then a cease and desist order. And then ultimately, we would take a property to court if there wasn't compliant reached. So that, having that all clearly in place, makes all of that a lot clearer if we have to get... to get to that point. Um, in this particular case, there were, uh, you know, I mean, there were, we- we, this was under a- this originated under a previous zoning enforcement officer, so it's been through kind of some- some, you know, kind of those changes, and there were movements towards an application several times, which is one of the reasons why there was an additional compliance action taken.
Thank you. Um, also too, at the max, um, operation of this facility, I know you said there were, like, four trucks or whatnot, um, per day possibly. At max operation, what is the max capacity? Is that the max capacity, or could there be more than just four?
Sure, again, if you'd ask that question again, so I- I wanna make sure I'm following.
What would be the max capacity, like, the max, uh, truck movement, if the facility was operating at full capacity? Because, you know, a business can operate and they expect to do it, but if they were maxed out, like, what would the max capacity be?
I guess I'd ask the applicant to, uh, please answer that.
It'd be three to five car, uh, trucks a day. It's already at, I mean, the- the number of railroad cars that are at the site are the maximum number of railroad cars that fit on the spur, so there isn't, there is no ability to increase the amount of, uh, of cars, of railroad cars. But on the benchmark presentation, whatever your exhibit number is, again, it indicates that, looking at the- at 35-week period from January 1st to August of this year, the average truckloads per week were 15 to 18, um, five and a half days of operation, that makes it three to four per day.
Thank you, and just one final comment. Um, I hear the argument that everyone is using about the site was non-conforming for 20 years, 20-plus years. I've lived at my house right now for over 20 years, and yes, the train traffic has increased, but I bought the house and I knew there was a train line behind it, so, um, that is fine. But, um, just- just because something was used and was non-conforming in a previous time, I don't think, I think this is our opportunity as a town to say, let's stop using it as a non-conforming zoning thing. Like, this is our opportunity to- to say, no, let's stop doing what we were doing in the past. Just because we did it in the past doesn't mean that it's correct. That was just my thing, so thank you.
Thank you, and I believe this gentleman would like to, uh, if you have a raise, uh, just a show of hands, who else would like to speak on the application? Gentleman back here, anyone else? Two other people, three other people? Yes, sir, name and address.
Yes, good evening, Ed Foley, I'm with the Genesee Wyoming and the Providence and Wester River with a serving carrier for Mr. Plumbau and for the Benchmark Project. You know, we- we provide service here locally for Tilcon, Connecticut, uh, over on Cherry Street for All Next, uh, as well as Infra Metals in Wallingford, so, uh, we're very attuned to customer needs and what we need to do to supply safe and efficient service. Uh, I can tell you that over the years, I've known Mr. Plumbau and his team here since, uh, we acquired the property in late 2016, early 2017. Uh, he's done an exemplary job with, uh, other facilities that we have, both on a safety front, efficiency standpoint, uh, and just a good person, and, uh, we're here to support his efforts here tonight. I did, uh, hear some of the commentary in the crowd with some safety concerns, uh, just for the- the, uh, board member here that talked about the crossing. Just know that every crossing, uh, has a bungalow number with an 800 number, so if we're talking about safety, we're talking about, um, safety vehicles that need to get by, uh, there are 800 numbers on those bungalows. Uh, we have automatic highway warning devices there as well. Uh, we did get the receipt, the, uh, notification, uh, from the woman that talked about, uh, her sight line, so we will be reaching back out to the state here in the next day or so. So I just want to let you know that safety is number one, it's paramount in what we do, and we don't take that lightly, so, thank you.
Good enough, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Um, could- could you just explain what that 800 number is or does?
It's an emergency, uh, number that would go directly to our dispatchers. So if there's a train on the circuit and- and you come upon a crossing and there's an 800 number on the bungalow, that's an emergency number. So let's say that the- let's say that the automatic, uh, the auto, uh, highway devices were down and stuck, and somebody were stuck at the crossing, that's an 800 number that somebody can call.
So, so if the train is there and, uh, you know, emergency vehicles have to get through and they, somebody dials that 800 number, how long is it gonna take to move the train?
Well, it'll be an immediate call to the- to- for the dispatch to the train operator. Uh, how long is that gonna take? Is it a matter of minutes? But it's- but it's, uh, it's faster than, um, contemplating the alternative.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir. And we'll go to this gentleman here, uh, in the back. I know Mr. Letourneau, most, nah, and then we'll move off to the left.
Good evening. Um, I'm here to speak in favor of this applicant. The, um, I've-
I'll just name an address.
I'm sorry, John Letourneau, 3 Region Court. Um, I've spoken before, um, I'm in favor of this. Um, i- it, listening to the commentary tonight, it was interesting on a few- few fronts. Um, the- the takeaway is that it's gotta be less use than what it was. I've heard that.
Well, not less, it, no more.
No more, okay. This has been an active rail yard since 1870. So when, what, what, where are the parameters? Do you go back to 1870 and look at the history of this rail yard? I mean, Mr. Frazina had it since 1949, and it was used for various things. There was a woodworking shop out there, but he also had a feed store out there, and it was a retail establishment that you could, farmers could buy feed, people could buy feed, um, fertilizers. But before Mr. Frazina, how that rail signing came about, I did a little research on it, and i- it was quite a hub for Wallingford. You had the commercial side that Mr. Plumbau's using, but then you had the passenger side across the street, and the station is still there, it just got moved back and it's up on a cinder block building, but the remnants are still there. Excuse me. And it was an active, active station. So fast forward, the station goes away, passenger rail goes away, but it's still used for commercial. So it- it became commercial out there with various, um, uh, entities. There was a coal dealer out there at one time, one of the farmers that was instrumental in bringing this, there was a handful of farmers, there was, uh, the cooks, the Ives, Beaumont, I'm probably gonna miss a couple, and they banded together and it was easier for them to get their supplies at that rail yard. So it was a hub of activity for a number of years, even going past the turn of the century into the 30s and early 40s before Mr. Frazina had it. And like I said, it was not only feed, there was- there was a coal yard out there. They have a, a, um, there's the main line and there's a spur that comes off there now. There's very possibly another spur there that's underneath. I had looked at that property a couple, uh, more than a couple of years ago, and Mr. Frazina had it, I was how time slips by. Um, he wanted me to buy it, and I walked the property extensively with him. And there were two spurs that came off there. So, you know, it- 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 it was an active yard. The other active yard like it was near Lyman Orchards. And you can go over the tracks, you go up by, uh, Lyman Gun Site, what used to be Lyman Gun Site, and go out the back way, and I think now that's an office and an antique store, or was at one time. But one of the things they had out there was, they stored freight cars of, of, uh, aluminum nitrate. I know I'm digressing on-
Yeah, I think, let's- let's- let's stay with this site and not go up the line.
My point being is, it was, it's been an active site. It's been an active site. I think this is the least amount of use that that site has seen. The interesting thing with this is the railroad component. Mr. Pl- if I was Mr. Plumbau, I'd sell the whole thing to the railroad. I'd sell the rest of the property to the railroad, because then he's exempt. He could do whatever he wants out there. He could rent the property, sell the property to the railroad, rent it back from him, because they're exempt. They could put a- a- a construction trailer out there for an office, run as many trucks as they want out of there, they're exempt. Here's a guy that's coming in front of you that's cleaned the property up and just looking to run a business out of there. And the, I- I just think that the line of questioning and- and it- it's- it's kind of like, you know, do we really want, do we really want a business out there? I say yes, especially this type of business where he's cleaned up the yard, he's kept, not only cleaned up the yard, he's kept the yard clean. He's gonna put up a great historic-looking building, and yeah, there's gonna be truck traffic out there. And the only reason he's on his property and not totally on the rail property is the conveyors. But don't, don't be fooled that, you know, trains can come to that site, they can unload onto a platform and still be on railroad property and have tractor-trailers go in and be on railroad property. So, you know, it- it's, it's, it's a slippery slope, but I- I- I really, I really hope you approve this, I think it would be great for the spot. You can put some restrictions on it, absolutely. I- I- I see that coming, because that happens to all applicants, but, um, landscaping and and things like that, sure, you can do that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And moving over to this side of the room, please, yes, gentleman, excuse me? Oh, okay, anyone else that would, uh, like to comment?
Hi, I'm Jim Gerace from Durham Road. I was born and raised right on Airline Road. It was a dirt road when my family moved out there. That train has been going up and down them tracks ever since I can remember. Has it intensified? Some. It's not going away. It's always gonna be there. So matter if Mr. Plumbau's in there or somebody else is in there, it's still gonna be there. There's still gonna be traffic. And a lot of the traffic is cars backed up over there. There's times where I wanna get across that tracks, it's down and it's all cars, there's no trucks in the by. I don't see them. I've seen little trucks going up and down the road, getting on the highway. Never have I ever seen them going up Airline Road. Never seen them going up any side streets. They go down the center, go down 150, or they get on 91. He's cleaned up the yard nice, he's made it look good, it was a real crap hole before, and now it looks nice, and he wants to continue to make it look even better. I think he should let it go forward with whatever he wants to do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And anyone else? Okay, this, we're going to go with, uh, this, this, this lady, and this will be the last call, so again, just a show of hands at everybody, this gentleman here, this lady here, and this also lady coming up will be our final individuals.
I'll be quick. Penny Williams, 989 Center Street, right across the street from him. There's a lot of activity out there, so if you're looking at more impact, yes, there's more impact because there's wineries up there, there are just more cars on the road everywhere. So I don't think we can stop the activity, and whether his operations there or not, you're still going to have a lot of activity on the east side of Wallingford, it's changed. So I just wanted to say that.
Good enough, thank you. And this young lady here, and then gentleman, you'll be our last.
Hi, my name is Ashley Matias. I live on 17 North Airline Road. My husband and his parents, um, right across the street from the fields that they're talking about. Um, I have to admit, yes, Mr. Plumbau has made the site look very better, very much, uh, better than it did look before. Um, my concern is that with his trucks coming in on a daily basis, multiple times a day, they sit there and they idle for a lot more than 15 minutes, sometimes up to 45 minutes. And my issue with that is to the air pollution, as well as the noise pollution with the traffic of the trains coming. We can't, um, change the traffic of the trains coming, but it has increased because of Mr. Plumbau's business. Again, he has, um, decided to start this business without coming to you first, and now he's asking for, um, your forgiveness for what he's done already without asking for- for permission first. So, um, I have no issues against others that are for it, but, um, just my issues with living, um, right across the street, the air pollution, the noise pollution, I'm home more often than not because of my vibro- my algebra problems, so it's, um, something I can smell in my house on a daily basis from, you know, the fumes coming out of his trucks.
Thank you. And this gentleman back.
John Capello, uh, 1062 East Center Street. I'm, uh, here to, uh, support Mr. Plumbau and his endeavor. I- I can't speak for some of the people here because I don't live right next door to it, um, but however, I'm about a quarter mile down the street, I drive by it every day multiple times. It has had zero impact on my life. I don't hear the noise from the trucks, I hear the noise from the highway, um, non-stop, that's never going to go away. You can straddle him with regulations that could make this work, he could shut, they can shut the trucks off, they don't have to sit there and idle. I'm for sure he probably has those rules in effect, um, they just may- may need to be enforced a little more, but I- I just wanted to say I'm- I'm here to voice my support for him. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And with that, uh, I bring it back to the, certainly you heard some comments, uh, from, uh, from the public. At this point in time, I don't know if the applicant would like to make any additional comments on the application?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, you know, given the nature of some of the comments, questions from the commissioners, comments from the public, I would respectfully request that the public hearing be, uh, kept open and continued to the November meetings, so we'll have an opportunity to come back and supplement, uh, the presentation, particularly as to the issue, um, you know, about the prior uses. I think that's been somewhat problematic, but also, you know, again, there seems to be some question as to what it, what is meant in your regulations by no more objectionable? Doesn't, I mean, it's interesting that in most regulations throughout, that I've read throughout the state, they talk about no more intensive. Yours doesn't use that term, it talks about objectionable, which to me almost sounds like a broader term, that you look at it, uh, and that's why we're trying to provide evidence about the, which I thought was significant, the- the fewer buildings means that it's, it's, it's fewer people, it's fewer, um, uh, activities taking place on the site. But I- I did want to, uh, with all due respect, be given the opportunity to come back and present so- some supplemental information, get some of the answers to the questions that were asked tonight, and, uh, and perhaps give this commission more information before it renders a decision.
Absolutely. Certainly that's your, uh, you know, that's your option to request that. Again, Mrs. Hand, would you like to make any final comments?
Uh, no, I would just, if you're going to continue, we just need a formal motion to continue.
Formal motion, sure. So at this point in time, I, uh, any commission members with, uh, any additional questions or any additional information that they would like to, uh, have the applicant provide?
Um, yes, before I make the motion, I- I would like, um, Mrs. Hand, the town planner, to, uh, you know, just inquire to the fire marshal about the train, or- or the applicant, um, and- and see what the position is there. Um, it, it- So with- with that, I'll make a motion to, uh, table application 411, c- c- continue application 411-19, special permit and office Benchmark Land Developers LLC, 988, East Center Street, to our, uh, November meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed abstains? We'll, uh, you, uh, see you in November.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on now to our, uh, next item on our agenda, and, excuse me, Mrs. Hand, you had mentioned in your notes that for item- And, excuse me, Mrs. Hand, you had mentioned in your notes that for items three and four that we could hear them at the same time. So should we read the legal motions for both at the same time and note all the correspondence? Is that correct?
Yeah, I would read the, yes. I would do the legal notice and correspondence.
For both, both at the same time.
Yeah, and then they'll move forward.
So are we waiting for the, uh, the auditorium to clear out if the applicant for, uh, the special permit for M. Goodman and Son would please come forward and begin preparing for their, uh, presentation? And again, we're going to be taking up both number three and number four at the same time.
Can Mr. Reed? No.
And at this point in time, Mr. Fitzsimmons, would you please, uh, read the legal notice for the, uh, number three, the special permit refuge and recycling facility for H. Goodman and Son Inc. at 53 North Plains Industrial Road, as well as the legal notice and all the correspondence for special permit storage of vehicle, uh, dealer, repair, office, storage, warehouse, outdoor storage for EJ Electric, also at 53 North Plains Industrial Road?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Special permit number 412-19, special permit for H. Goodman and Son to operate a recycling center scrap metal sorting at 53 North Plains Industrial Road. Application 413-19, special permit location of use for EJ Electric to allow vehicle, dealer, repair, office, storage, warehouse, and outdoor storage at 53 North Plains Industrial Road. Attachments and email and documentation received, we received a letter from the deputy fire marshal, excuse me, a memo from the deputy fire marshal dated August 19th, 2019. We received a copy of a memo sent from Aaron O'Hare, Wallingford's environmental planner, addressed to Casey Han, Wallingford's town planner, dated August 28th, 2019. We received a copy of a letter from the, um, special permit application narrative from the, um, B&amp;L Companies on October 4th, 2019. We received a copy of a letter addressed to Casey Han, Wallingford's town planner, dated October 3rd, 2019. It was submitted by John Schmitz from B&amp;L. We also received a copy of the correspondence from the Wallingford's environmental planner dated 10/7/19. We have a memo from the Department of Engineering, addressed to the Planning and Zoning Commission, dated October 7th, 2019. We also have a copy of an interdepartmental referral memo from the Deputy Fire Marshal's Office dated August 19th, 19. We also have a copy of a memo from the Deputy Fire Marshal's Office dated 7/16/19. We also have a copy of an environmental planner memo dated July 9th, 2019. Copy of a letter from, um, Aaron O'Hare, Wallingford's environmental planner, to Casey Han, the town planner, dated August 28th, 2019. A letter was sent from the Planning and Zoning Office, addressed to Joseph Rabino regarding special permit application for 6/19, and that letter was dated July 29th, 2019. We also have another narrative, special permit narrative received from B&amp;L, October 4th, 2019. A letter was received from the offices of B&amp;L on October 3rd, 2019, regarding special permit application for 13-19. We have another memorandum from the environmental planner dated 10/7/19. And we received on October 7th, a memorandum addressed to the Planning and Zoning Commission from Rob Bolchmas, Wallingford's Department of Engineering. That's it.
Did you pick all these up to, to the, uh?
Three?
The ones that we have dropped off today? These are on the counter.
I don't think so. Excuse me, we also have correspondence from the fire marshal's office dated 10/9/19. Additional comments were received from Eric Kruger, Wallingford Senior Engineer, Water and Sewer, dated October 15th, 2019. We also received updated comments from the fire marshal's office dated 10/9/19. And, and lastly, an additional memorandum was addressed to the town planner from Eric Kruger, Wallingford Senior Engineer, Water and Sewer.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. And at this point in time, if the applicant and/or his representatives would, uh, introduce themselves and begin their presentation.
Uh, good evening, gentlemen. Uh, my name is Chris Gagnon. I'm a professional engineer, licensed here in Connecticut. I work with, uh, BL Companies and, uh, with, closely with John Schmitz, who has provided a lot of correspondence to you guys. I have here with me, uh, Mr. Rabino and Mr. Stimson. Um, they are owner representatives from EJ Electric, uh, which is the owner of the property, um, the subject property. So what we have before you here is, um, an attempt to get into compliance with your regulations. The current owners of the property purchased the property just a couple of years ago?
Yep.
Just a couple of years ago, and, um, at that time, uh, soon after purchasing it, uh, it came to their attention that there were components of the building and of the site that were not in compliance with, um, either regulations or code that they were unaware of. Um, so there has been extensive conversations with, between town staff, between the town engineering, between wetlands, between the fire department. And I believe what we have in front of you is a, uh, when, when all the, uh, site repairs are complete, we will have a site and building that is in compliance with your regulations. Um, a little bit of details on the history. There was a site plan that was approved back in 96, which spoke, which, uh, had the building in its current state, uh, was, was, was what was approved in 96. As part of that, there was a site plan and landscaping, um, parking, et cetera. The building was constructed per the approved drawings. The site was not constructed per the approved drawings. This was, um, prior to the current owners purchasing the site, and now they're here in front of you after we've had a full understanding of what was out of compliance, and we are, um, proposing to bring it back into compliance with respect to site landscaping and the parking tables based on the uses, et cetera. Um, there's not a lot of engineering going on here. We have one dry well that's going in. Um, town engineer has, uh, reviewed and approved, um, what we're doing in terms of stormwater management. Uh, we're not building any new parking. Um, the, the parking lots, uh, the, the current parking spaces, um, are shown to be in compliance with the uses of the building. Um, so that's, that's really it in a nutshell as to, as to what is in front of you right now. I have the owner reps here if there are any questions with respect to usage, and I can speak to you.
I think, I, I think that's what we'd like to do, if we could kind of crack the nut open and get into the, uh, get into the uses of the site, if you would, and what issues are being addressed. You mentioned that there were some non-compliance issues. What those issues were and how they're being addressed, if you would please?
So the, the biggest non-compliance issue, uh, was the fact that the parking lot itself was constructed without any of the landscaping islands that were required as part of the original approval. Um, the perimeter landscaping and the buffer landscaping was in place. There's comments from, uh, the town indicating, uh, that we needed to confirm that the, the perimeter landscaping, um, had the required trees. Um, but in terms of construction on the site, it's really, um, the landscape islands that you see, if I may.
Uh, there should be a button there to turn on. Power. Power, there you go.
How many engineers does it take? Um, the trees that you see here and the landscape islands associated with them are all proposed. So that, um, they're proposed in compliance with the regulations in terms of the number of parking spaces. And the nice side benefit to that is it, um, actually acts to reduce the impervious area out there. And then we're also proposing, um, one extra dry well here, um, in a low spot, so there's no regrading necessary to direct water to the dry well. And, uh, the rest of the drainage on the site is handled through the dry wells. So based on the reduction of impervious area and the introduction of this one dry well, um, town engineering staff is, um, has indicated that they are good with the proposed operation. Um, and there is some access stairs that are also being proposed. So, um, you know, that's, that's more of a fire issue. I'm a civil engineer. I don't deal with fire code as often, like some of us don't deal with railroad laws. Um, so, so that's, that's really what's going on on the site. It's, it's not a, it's not a super complicated, uh, change, but, but what it is, is, um, a, an applicant that recently purchased the property learned that it was out of compliance in a number of ways, and now we're also bringing it back into compliance. Um, and then it's, it's more a clarification of uses with respect to what's going on inside the building and then tying it to the, um, to the parking and the, the table indicates, and we have correspondence from town staff indicating that they are comfortable with the ways that we have calculated the parking requirements.
You mentioned, you know, as far as, uh, clarification of uses, if you'd please speak to that?
The, that also is why we have somewhat two applications in front of you. Um, there's a representative for the second one as well. Um, but it's, it's, uh, we have business office, we have an auto storage, and we have a metal recycling going on in here. Um, all not very intense uses with respect to parking and the, the offices associated with the, um, with the EJ Electric folks. And so those are the uses that we have in there, and, um, forgive me, but there's been a couple of changes as to what the actual application is in terms of the auto storage. It was a special exception. And then now we have in front of you, it's a location or the proposed location. Can you help me out there?
So it's a location of use, special permit for the auto facility. Here, it's different in different towns, but in Wallingford, the special permits also encompass site plan application, so there's not a separate second site plan application. So that's kind of the site plan and that special permit. The special permit for the recycler, the material recycler in the back was a separate, was elected to do it, uh, the decision was made to do that as a separate special permit. So.
That was number three.
Yep.
On your agenda.
That's true.
Um, so those, those are the uses that we have, um, currently in the building and as part of the parking. Um, there, there's also some vehicle storage and equipment storage going on out there. And as part of the conditions of approval, um, from town staff, um, it is understood that should unused area use change to a more intense use like the office, the storage and/or vehicle storage would need to be returned to parking. So we would have to come in front of you, um, should the usage change. It's how I understand the situation.
That's it?
I think so.
Okay. Again, before I go to any of the commission, uh, uh, so gentlemen, you'd like to speak? Sure.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, for the record, my name's Bernard Pellegrino. I'm an attorney with the Pellegrino Law Firm, and I'm joined, uh, by my clients, Michael and Chris Goodman. We're application number three. I'm happy to, uh, present that portion of the application, or if you want to finish up with them. We're, we're, we're a tenant in the building in the rear section.
Okay. I, I guess at this point in time, unless commission members have any questions for the first, for the, the first part of the presentation, uh, we'll go to number, unless Mr. Colehand, you have it?
Um, yeah, uh, application three, I, I'm, I'm, I'm still not sure that, uh, we heard the definition of what they're actually recycling.
Yeah, I haven't even started, so, uh, I haven't gotten.
He's, he's, he's number three.
I'm number three, so.
So just to clarify, three and four really should have been in the opposite order on your agenda. Four should have been first.
Yeah, four first.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Okay. So you want me to go, or?
Yeah, sir, with that.
You want to finish up with him?
It's a good, no, I, I think at this point in time, if you would give your presentation, and then we'll, uh, we'll sort things out.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, so, um, as previously described by Mr. Gagnon, um, we are one of the tenants in the building in the rear section of the building. H. Goodman and Son, um, we're an existing tenant. When issues, um, came about, about the uses and what's happening in there, um, it was determined that we should apply for a special permit for our use. Um, our use, which I'll describe in a moment, has been classified as, uh, a recycling, uh, operation, which is permitted in the zone, but it is a special permit use that's permitted. Um, so although our activity is classified as a recycling facility, the actual activities on site are, I think, much less intense than you would, might typically think for a recycling center. Um, what our client performs is really a, a scrap metal, um, resale operation, so, and I have some photos that I'd like to submit. So, so what, what our client does on the, on the property is they purchase scrap metal from manufacturers. The metals, uh, some samples I've given you. Those metals are, are brought to the, um, facility, and then, uh, they're either sorted, if they come as a mixed, um, mixed batch, if you will, into containers of similar metals. Um, or if they're shipped to the site as a single metal product, they're, they're repackaged until they have a sufficient quantity of a particular metal. And then those metals are sold to the end purchaser who uses the metal in whatever operation, um, they're using. So they receive product, they sometimes sort it, they repackage it into containers that are part of the pictures. You see what we, what I've given you as examples of what they receive, how they sort it, then they repackage it into the larger bins, and then it's, um, then that product is purchased by someone who comes, picks it up, and it's carted offsite. Uh, all the activities are conducted inside the building, uh, except for one container in the yard that's picked up, um, as I described in the application, twice a month by yard that's picked up, as I described in the application, twice a month by a vendor who takes that offsite. The size of the operation is relatively modest. It's low intensity, few employees, and so it has no adverse impact to the neighboring environments or the site. It's probably the least intense use onsite. And we would submit that the use meets the special permit criteria.
Thank you, sir. And again, before we go to the commission, again, I know Mrs. Hand, again, this is much like the other application where there was a fairly exhaustive file. And the fact that there was, as gentleman initially indicated, some zoning violations. If you could give us a, a brief background on, you know, this, this particular situation, the application and the, the use of the property and some of the issues that apparently have been encountered and these gentlemen are attempting to rectify.
Sure. So this, my office got involved about a year ago as a referral from the Fire Marshal's Office. And basically what came to light after some conversation and research is the, the building, I mean, I think that there was a good summary for you on the record, but the building was approved, it was approved with an addition. The uses approved for the property were a front, were a configuration that had a front two stories of office, similar, not exactly parallel, but very similar to what's proposed in terms of the office now. And then warehousing and manufacturing in the back. So the first issue that, that the referral, where the referral came from had to do with the uses. So there were uses on the site, as has been explained in the presentation, there are uses on the site that were an R occurring that had not been approved by the commission. The difference here, between here and the last one is these are potentially permitted uses. So there are uses that are potentially permissible in the zone. The office components, permitted use in the zone, the, the, like I said, the configuration is slightly different, so that involved a change. And then the recycler, which has been discussed, and then the, the auto, the auto, it's storage of, for an auto facility affiliated with an approved dealers and repairs on another site. So vehicle storage inside the building. And then much of the building is sort of dead storage right now. The other two issues that came up when we visited the site was the building, some things had been done inside the building that were not part of the original set of approvals, so the original building permits. And that, from what I understand, was done by the previous owner, not the current owner, in that they created this like mezzanine area, and there's a second floor in the back, which, none of which was part of the original approval. And then the parking area had been expanded in the back, also has been explained. So that's kind of where we stand. The, so the, really the big things here, so, and if this is approved, there are still fire code and building code issues that are pressing and do need to be dealt with imminently. So because it has been a year of them not being dealt with. So I, I think that that's important for everyone to understand, but my understanding is that the property owners wanted to get approvals with you before they pursued what they need to do inside the building under building and fire code.
And they're well aware of what they need to do under the building and fire?
Yes, very well aware. So the, the big issues, or sort of the, the primary questions for my office has really been to pin down what's happening inside the building. So what are the uses? What is the use configuration inside the building? And then making sure we have a compliant site plan. So I think we've finally, I know the, the office area, for example, is, is pretty underutilized right now. The second story isn't being utilized. So I think there was a lot of decision-making that had to be done in terms of the proposal. Obviously, if there were another change in the future, the, the property owner could come back or a business could come back to modify the interior, modify the interior uses. But we really need to have that clarified, also because that speaks to the parking requirements. And that was the other big question. So as discussed, right now, there are a lot of equipment trucks, I'll call them, stored on the site to the point where even though most of the building isn't occupied, there's, there are not a lot of available parking spaces. Like when I go there, there's maybe one parking space because the rest is gated off and used for, which I think is, probably serves them okay right now. But that's why I'm recommending, so they'd like to be able to continue to use a lot of the parking spots for vehicle equipment storage. So what I'm recommending as a condition to sort of address that is if at any point additional parking does become necessary, and that would be at the determinant of, the determination of the commission or my office, or the planning and zoning office, then those spaces have to be, have to revert back to parking spaces. So under those circumstances, there is provision for enough parking. They can fit the compliant number of parking spaces on the site, but they'd like to be able, and in all honesty, right now, they don't need all of them. I mean, they may need a few more, so we'll have to kind of keep an eye on that as that evolves. And, you know, they may need to, to give up a couple of spaces, but they certainly don't need all of the required spaces right now. So, but they have to understand that if there comes a point, you know, if they occupy more office space, or there's an intensification of the office space, or some of that storage space becomes rented out as storage space, then they may have to give up some of that. Other than that, the, the site design issues, much like the last application, have pretty much been addressed. In terms of the, the recyclers, right, it is a special permit category in the zone. This is in an industrial zone. I would tend to agree with the characterization that it's less intense than what was really anticipated in that, in that land use category. I mean, what they're doing is really more of sorting and redistributing, sort of. So I don't, I don't have any objection to that. The one, the one question that I had, I had recommended a condition of approval that no dumpsters or storage containers for the operation were to be stored outside. I was of the understanding that none of them were kept outside, but I think Attorney Pellegrino mentioned maybe one is kept outside, and I do have some concern about that.
It's, there is one dumpster.
What's, what goes into it? Can you?
Light, light metal and.
If you please, just come to the microphone, introduce yourself, please, and your comments.
Chris Goodmaster, I'm, I'm one of the owners. In that container goes light metal.
If you could just come a little bit closer to the microphone.
That better, that better. Light metal goes into that dumpster, which is heating and air conditioning vents and stuff like that, that normally wouldn't be, it's bulky, wouldn't go into, into our, inside to our facility. And then it's carted off to another scrapyard that, that takes it away.
Does it need to be outside? The concern that I would have is that it rains and there is maybe grease and things like that in there that then leaks down out of the dumpster.
If that's a concern of yours, then we could have that dumpster removed. If that's something that the town is concerned about, then that shouldn't be a problem with us.
Yeah, I mean, maybe what we could do is make that subject to an approval by the Water and Sewer Division, subject to review by the Water and Sewer Division, because they were the ones that made that comment to me.
That would be fine. Thank you.
Sorry about that. And then the only other conditions I had were proper maintenance of the dry wells, because there was some question about whether there's some, there was some issue with the dry wells overflowing a bit. So we would want to be able to inspect those and require dry well maintenance as necessary. And generally, other than that, you have some conditions from the Water and Sewer Division that I've sort of incorporated regarding no repairs onsite for the auto use, no sales onsite, but also generally speaking, no auto repairs or washing of any sort is allowed onsite.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Hand. And again, commission members with questions for the applicant? Mr. Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just had one, one question on, you know, what's the process to go from this to this? Is it some type of grinding machine?
No, no processing is happening onsite. The materials come as you see them. We're not grinding them or anything. They're just different product.
Okay.
Coming from, you know, different.
Got it.
User is whatever, you know, leftover scrap from their process.
Yep, thank you.
Any other commission members? Seeing none, again, this is a, it's a public hearing. Any members of the public would like to speak on either applications, please come forward with your name and address and your comments. Seeing none, Mrs. Hand, do you have any final comments that you would like to make? As far as the applicant, either one, either or?
No.
Any final comments that either of you gentlemen would like to make?
Thank you for your time.
Good. Well, seeing none, I guess I would, at this point in time, would like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing, both on our special permit for H. Goodmaster, as well as the special permit for EJ Electric. So I'd entertain motions, individual motions on both of those.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public hearing on application for 13-19, EJ Electric special permit.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And also for the special permit for Goodmaster and Son.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing for Goodmaster and Son, application for 12-19.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Fitzsimmons, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? And at this point in time, I'd entertain a motion for our item number three, which is the special permit for H. Goodmaster and Son, Inc.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve this special permit, refuse recycling facility, application for 12-19 for H. Goodmaster and Son Incorporated, to allow 21,516 square feet of material sorter slash processor limited to the activities described on the record tonight within the existing building at 53 North Plains Industrial Road. As shown on the plans entitled Existing Commercial Industrial Building, 53 North Plains Industrial Road, Wallingford, Connecticut, revised to 10/03/19, subject to the following conditions of approval. Compliance with interdepartmental referral from Brian Schach, Department of Fire Marshal, dated August 19th, 2019. Recommended conditions of approval and memorandum from Rob Walter Midas, Department of Engineering, dated October 7th, 2019. Recommended conditions in interdepartmental referral from Aaron O'Hare, dated 10/7/2019. Proper maintenance of existing dry wells onsite. Use to be limited to the activities as described on the record tonight, including no recycling activities beyond sorting of materials to occur, no dumpsters slash storage containers for the operation to be stored outdoors, except with the approval of the Water Sewer Division. All activity to, all activity to occur inside the building, no washing of materials to occur. Compliance with any, all deep permitting and other requirements.
We have a, we have a motion for the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Heine.
Yes, to approve.
Yes.
Yes. And yes, that application's been approved. At this particular point in time, I've entertained a motion on the special permit for EJ Electric.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, based on the totality of the record, to approve a special permit, application for 13-19 for EJ Electric, to allow 2,607 square feet indoor vehicle storage for an offsite approved dealer slash repairer, 14,666 square feet of office space, and 26,538 square feet of storage space within the existing building, and allow parking slash storage expansion and associated site improvements at 53 North Plains Industrial Road. As shown on the plans entitled Existing Commercial Industrial Building, 53 North Plains Industrial Road, Wallingford, Connecticut, revised to October 3rd, 2019, subject to the following conditions of approval. Recommended conditions of approval and memorandum from Rob Walter Midas, Department of Engineering, dated October 7th, 2019. Recommended conditions in interdepartmental referral from Aaron O'Hare, dated October 7th, 2019. Compliance with interdepartmental referral from Brian Schach, Department of the Fire Marshal, dated July 16th, 2019, and August 19th, 2019. Proper maintenance of existing dry wells onsite. Based on discrepancies in technical parking requirements versus functioning of uses on site, note to be added to the map and statement filed on land records that any parking spaces that are used for vehicle equipment storage rather than parking spaces are to be returned to use as parking spaces and no longer used for truck equipment storage, should they become needed as determined by the Planning and Zoning Commission or the town planner. No vehicle, truck, or equipment repairs to occur anywhere onsite or in the building. Floor drains in the building to be plugged is required by the Water Sewer Division. Special permit allows only automotive storage, no sales, repairs, or maintenance work, including washing of vehicles allowed in building or anywhere onsite. Sentimentation and erosion control bond to be determined by the town planner. Work to be completed by six months?
Maybe we can get a point of clarification from the applicant, but I think that would be reasonable. I mean, we do have the winter coming, so I would say maybe June 1st. Yeah, if that's agreeable to the applicant.
June 1st?
Okay. That okay?
That would be agreeable, thank you.
June 1st, 2020, in order to prevent further zoning enforcement action. Combination, square footage of uses to be limited to as approved, and sign off from the Water Sewer Divisions.
And can I just, for a point of clarification, add the additional comments from the Fire Marshal that were dated 10/10/19, and comments from Water and Sewer of October 15th that you just got tonight?
And comments from the Fire Marshal dated October 10th, 2019, and comments from Water and Sewer dated October 15th, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Heine.
Yes, to approve.
Yes.
Yes. And yes, application's been approved. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a comment, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I don't often go further down north industrial plains than the Polish Club for an occasional event or beer, but I did visit this site and I wanted to let you know that I was duly impressed by the collection of commercial industrial development. So I wanted to compliment the town and this commission and all of the property owners. Well-maintained, very successful, and I do a lot of this in other towns, and I wanted to let you know how impressed I was by that.
Thank you, sir. And if I could, we, I'd like to, because we have three accessory apartments that should take a very short period of time, and I would ask the indulgence from our, the folks from the Wallingford Lodging Partners, if we'd have those three accessory apartments just go first, because they should, should not take very much time. So with that, the, the next item on agenda I'd like to drop down to is item number six, which is a site plan, it's accessory apartment for Franco at 45 Broadview Drive. If the applicant would please come forward and begin their presentation, if you would, please. begin their presentation, if you would, please. And Mr. Fitzsimmons, if you would just please note all correspondence for the record.
Sure. We have a copy of the application. We have a copy of a letter sent by the Town Planner to the Francos dated September twentieth, twenty nineteen. We have a copy of a memorandum from the Fire Marshal dated September tenth, twenty nineteen. And finally, copy of an inter-office memorandum addressed to the Town Planner from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, Wallingford Water &amp; Sewer. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. And if you could please give a brief overview of what your application is about.
Yes, I'm Lisa Franco, and I'm the owner at forty-five Broadview Drive. We're putting an application in for an in-law accessory apartment for my mother-in-law. She's she's been a widow since forty-two years old. She's seventy-six now, and she just can't afford to live on her own anymore.
Okay. Thank you.
Where we're at now.
Mrs. Hand, any comments on the application?
Nope, it complies with our regulations.
Any commission members with any questions for the applicant? At this point in time, I would entertain a motion on the, on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve site plan accessory apartment for Franco at forty-five Broadview Drive, application two twenty-nine dash nineteen. And I think there's one condition of approval with
Inspection, zoning enforcement.
Final inspection by the zoning enforcement officer.
And you also have comments from Water &amp; Sewer dated October second, twenty nineteen.
And comments from Water &amp; Sewer dated August twenty-ninth?
Uh, I had October second.
October second, twenty nineteen, sorry.
We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Heine.
Yes, to approve.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, the application's been approved. Have a good evening.
Slim, thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one question. The building permit, when are we allowed to apply for that after this is approved? Do you have to wait a certain amount of time, or?
Pull the
The legal notice runs on Friday, and that kicks off the fifteen-day appeal period. So technically, you could apply for the permit. I mean, as soon as we issue you your written zoning permit, which will be in the next couple of days by Friday, that during those fifteen days, anything you do is at your own risk. So
Oh, right.
So if you thought it might get appealed, you would want to wait the fifteen days. No one opposed your application, so.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. And our next item is item number seven. It's a site plan accessory apartment for Mixel at nineteen Laurelwood Drive. Again, if the applicant would please come forward. And Mr. Fitzsimmons, if you would please note all correspondence for the record.
We have a copy of an inter-office memo from the Office of the Fire Marshal dated September tenth, twenty nineteen. We have a copy of a inter-office memorandum addressed to the Town Planner from Eric Kruger, Wallingford Water &amp; Sewers, Senior Engineer. And finally, we have comments from the Office of the Fire Marshal dated October eleventh, twenty nineteen. That's it.
And again, if the applicant would please introduce themselves and give us a brief presentation of their application.
Where Beth and Emmett Chutz?
If you could please just pull that a little bit closer to you, that would be great.
Where Beth and Emmett Chutz are, addresses two sixty Brooksville Avenue, Hope, Ellen Hamden, and hopefully very soon, it will be nineteen Laurelwood Drive. We purchased the house with our daughter and son-in-law so that they could take care of us when we get old and that we could take care of the grandchildren now. So the house, the reason, we looked for about a year to find the right house. This one has an existing second master suite. It's got, already has a master bedroom and bathroom for us. And what we need to do is to turn the attached garage, which is right below the, our bedroom and bathroom, into our living room and kitchen.
Okay. Thank you. And again, Mrs. Hand, any comments on the application?
Just briefly, so the Chutz did come in to see me several times. It's it's a more complicated, because part of it's existing and they're doing it over two stories within the garage. It's a little more of a complicated configuration than if you're just like adding on a new accessory apartment. So we've been kind of round and round about the dimensions, and there's also some area that's kind of not usable space that's under, based on the roof line. So I think we've gotten to a point where they're, where they're good to go. They're in compliance. I am missing, I have enough information that I can say I'm confident that they're compliant, but I do need a couple of additional final dimensions from their design person, so I'm just recommending that as a condition of approval.
And again, specifically, what you're looking for?
Just that the that final plans indicating all of the dimensions, showing compliant dimensions be submitted.
Okay. Thank you. Commission members, any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, unless you'd like to make some further comments, I'd entertain a motion on the application.
We're glad we came. We didn't know whether we were supposed to or not. We're glad we did.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve application twenty thirty dash nineteen site plan for Mixel, Mixel, for a seven hundred and seventy-eight square foot accessory apartment at nineteen Laurelwood Drive, subject to final inspection by the zoning enforcement officer. The inter-office memorandum from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, dated October second, twenty nineteen. And final plans with the final dimensions demonstrating compliance with size restrictions to be submitted to the Town Planner.
We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Heine.
Yes, to approve.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, application's been approved, and welcome to Wallingford.
Oh, it's, I think it's going to be great. We're really enjoying it so far.
And we're going to drop down now to item number nine, which is a site plan accessory apartment for Palumbo at One Bertini Lane. Again, if the applicant would please come forward, begin their preparing for the presentation. And Mr. Fitzsimmons, if you again would note all correspondence for the record.
We have a copy of a letter sent by the Planning and Zoning Office to the Palumbos dated September twentieth, twenty nineteen. We also have a copy of a memorandum from Eric Kruger, Water &amp; Sewers, Senior Engineer, sent to the Town Planner dated October second, twenty nineteen. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. Again, if the applicant would please introduce themselves and give us a brief overview on their application.
My name is Antonio Palumbo. This is my, this is my father, Pasquale Palumbo. He's actually the homeowner at One Bertini Lane, Wallingford, Connecticut. I'm here just really for Trent. Just to make sure
To be his representative, I understand. Sure.
So this is at One Bertini Lane, he finished the lower level. This is kind of an after the fact situation.
So it's an existing accessory apartment that you're looking for approval for, is that?
What happened is they built the summer kitchen, like a lot of Italians like to do.
Yep.
That is no good with, I guess, zoning. So now we're here.
So you're looking to correct it, is that correct?
Correct.
So we're all correct. Mrs. Hand, again, any comments on the application?
Yeah, one question, and I did try to call, but I wasn't able to get a hold of anyone. The mailing address is listed as for Hidden Brook. So who owns it and who lives there? Because the owner has to live there.
That is my father's other house.
Which one does he live at?
He actually lives in Hidden Brook, and Bertini is just about to sell.
Okay, so what we will need is, and we can do it as a condition, under the condition, is verification from the new owner that, which we will follow up with them. So they'll need to give us verification that they live on the property, because that's one of the requirements with an accessory apartment.
Okay.
So we can approve it subject to that.
Yeah, I mean, I think after this hearing,
It'll
he has to call Attorney San Aviva, who was here earlier this evening. He's the closing attorney. And then they're going to just close, and then I think this just transfers to the new owner.
Yeah, as long, as long as the, you know, the owner of the property, who's ever buying the house from your father,
Yes.
that individual, the owner, is occupying the house. They need to occupy the house.
They are occupying.
Yeah, and then the accessory apartment would be, it would be a part of it, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, that's fine. And then you had a memo from Water &amp; Sewer dated October second, and then, again, I need final dimensions submitted and confirmed. We had them close enough, but I just need to finalize the numbers with somebody.
The Water &amp; Sewer gentleman did come to the house yesterday.
Okay.
And he, I guess he gave an inspection and everything was okay, but she's asking for dimensions. Did he take dimensions or anything?
We can, we can do that as a
That can be made, that can be made as a condition of approval.
And then I think today Lou came from
The building.
So the inspections have all been kind of Is this the dimensions that you're speaking?
That would be perfect. Can I keep it?
And with that, Mrs. Hand, we are all set, is that correct? Any commission members with any questions? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve site plan for Palumbo to allow a six hundred and twenty square foot accessory apartment at One Bertini Lane, subject to verification that the new owner lives on the property. Final inspection by the zoning enforcement officer. The inter-office memorandum from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, dated October second, twenty nineteen. And I think you have the final dimensions, so I don't need to say that.
Okay, we have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Yes.
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 And yes, your application's been approved. Have a good evening, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And which brings us now to our item number five, which is a site plan for Wallingford Lodging Partners LLC for Miles Drive. And again, I thank the applicants for allowing these other three applications to go forward prior to them. And again, Mr. Fitzsimmons, if you please note all correspondence for the record.
Correspondence sent from the Planning and Zoning Office, addressed to Wallingford Lodging Partners, dated September nineteenth, twenty nineteen. A memorandum was received from Eric Kruger, Wallingford Water &amp; Sewer, Senior Engineer, dated July fifteenth, twenty nineteen. A memorandum was received from Aaron O'Hare, addressed to the Town Planner, dated September twentieth, twenty nineteen. A memo was received from the Environmental Planner's Office, dated nine twenty nineteen. We have a copy of email correspondence sent from Jeff Gordon to the Town Planner, dated nine twenty nineteen. We also have a copy of a memo from the Office of the Fire Marshal, dated September twentieth, twenty nineteen. We have a copy of a letter addressed to the Wallingford Town Planner from Jeffrey Gordon, dated September thirty, September twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen. We have a copy of the operations and maintenance plan for Miles Drive, dated June twenty nineteen. We have a copy of a map showing the block. And also attached to that is the Declaration of Easy and Covenants. And we also have a copy of the memorandum from the Health Department, dated October fourth, twenty nineteen. Eric Kruger continues to send us mail, October eighth, twenty nineteen, regarding this application. And finally, we also have correspondence from the Office of the Fire Marshal, dated October fourth, twenty nineteen. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. And again, if the applicant would please identify themselves and begin their presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Kevin Crusaden. I'm an attorney for the applicant. The applicant, member of the applicant LLC is here with us tonight in the audience. My office is at three Lafayette Street in Milford. With us also tonight is Jeff Gordon from Codis Bode and Associates, and Jeff's going to give the presentation.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. My name is Jeffrey Gordon. I'm a principal partner with Codis Bode and Associates. I'm a licensed landscape architect and environmental planner. We do business at two six three Boston Post Road in Orange, Connecticut, representing Wallingford Lodging Partners. This is a development group that owns a number of hotels throughout the country and are currently completing development of a Hilton product hotel in Orange, Connecticut, and starting a project in North Haven and hoping to add one here in the town of Wallingford. The subject property is referred to as Four Miles Drive, as highlighted here. It is a rear lot comprised of approximately a hundred and ninety thousand square feet in an I-five district. The property was approved as part of a subdivision in February of nineteen eighty-three and has sat undeveloped for a long time. And from the time it was approved, it was a different zone, but now it is under certain constraints under the I-five zone, which required us to get a couple of variances. And the variances were obtained with respect to a parking buffer and front yard landscaping. A couple of things to keep in mind about this property. We did get comments from staff. We worked through the Wetlands Commission. There is an intermittent water course that runs on the eastern side of the property on the state right-of-way. It is basically a drainage ditch for the highway. And that is a on-ramp on the southbound side of I ninety-one. The property sits to the east of the Homewood Suites and to the south of the, I believe it's a Fairfield Inn. Again, we have the accessway and the parcel from the northwest corner of the property to the southeast corner drops forty feet. So we can see that it has some challenging aspects to it, and that has affected development plans that we have come forth with. The product is a Hampton Inn and Suites, part of the Hilton Line. New nineteen, two thousand nineteen prototype building. And what it would be is part of the almost a Hartford Market, because the one in North Haven is more of the New Haven Market area. With the development that's taking place in the corridor there, there is still a demand for rooms coming in. We do have a number of points to just touch base on regarding the site plan. As you can see, that the building is on a north-south access, access. The entranceway is a shared private road coming in off of Miles Drive. We own half of it, and the Fairfield Inn owns the other half of it. And we access the property. We have a large planting area for this bay of parking. Then we have a single-side loaded parking by the pool. We have an entrance canopy and whatever offloading of materials would take place right through the front door, a little turnaround area. And the thing that is probably of some note here is on the parking. Staff meeting back in March, we were guided that less would be better for the disturbance of the site. If we could do a little less, we have a hundred and five rooms on the site. And what we are doing is proposing parking for a hundred and nine spaces, but we also show an additional opportunity for overflow parking to be installed at some future date if it was warranted. The, the building does not trigger the trip generation requirement for traffic analysis. Based on the town regulations Based on the town regulations, we would have combined peak hours of approximately 65, 65 trips. But using the ITE land use 310 for hotels, the 10th edition, we would have 41 a.m. and 34 p.m. peak hour trips for a total of 75. Either way you compute it, it's below the town threshold of 100. We did provide you a color graphic that was requested to show the area that was counted as open space. We are at, right now, at almost 53% of the site would be open space. We have, as a rear lot, we have a little bit of a conundrum as to what's the front of the building, what's the side of the building and whatnot. So what we have here is taking the front range line of the building, the closest area, is this appendage here for the pool. We're 139 feet away, and so front yard requirement of 100 feet, the rest of the yards are 50 feet, and we comply with all of those. There's also a requirement that we don't have our dumpster areas in the front yard. So you have a use requirement in the front yard, but you also have a dimensional requirement about a front yard. So declaring that this is the front setback, declaring that everything from the face of this building here is the front yard. We've moved our dumpster storage area to the area that's probably the most practical location on the site that won't be visible to pretty much anything is down over here, because the, most of the clients will enter the site, come around to the front door. We had since learned that we're out, while we're in the course of the applications, that you had amended your regulation for vehicle charging. So should the commission approve this project, we will come back to you for a special permit for that use. Just a suggestion, sometimes it's nice to bifurcate and have public charging versus private charging, because this is effectively a smart building. Your phones or your cards will operate everything. You can't come off the street and use the chargers for this, and only a tenant or a visitor can do that. So it's different than public lots. So that might be a nuance that your regulation could consider at some future date. Also, a comment was made about the grading for the site. Again, with a 40-foot change in grade from one side to the other, and being in a watershed protection area, we do have some challenges. Working through the fact that there is a major sewer easement that goes along the eastern property line, that poses another challenge for us. So going to sheet SP3. You can see we've cut along here. There's actually a ridge line, because when the Homewood was built, they cut up on this side, we're cutting on that side, leaving an undisturbed ridge along the common property line there. So it won't be getting headlight penetration or, or parking lot lighting migration on either side. What we have had to do in order to meet the sand filter requirements, you can't put a sand filter on the side of a hill, so we have to bring the site up high enough to get the drainage to go back and get into the sand filter basin for treatment. It's a little different, the, the Wallingford regulation, because in other communities, we're able to actually put the filtration underneath the retention pond, but here it's required to be a separate unit. So being that it's gonna sit a little higher than the pond would have, that also pushes the site up a little bit to get the water into it. Again, we're also going, I spoke with Mr. Baltramidis about going to a steeper than two-to-one slope in certain areas. We have hard armoring and reinforced slope, and that was a requirement of, of the site with Mr. Kruger asking us not to spread the slope out as we could have to the property line, because he really did not want any migration of fill over the easement. It, it's something that makes it easier for them to maintain. A couple of other things he required is he required a matting, a concrete matting over the sanitary line, so the outflow would go through there, but you'd be able to drive a vehicle over it. So it's almost like a docks planking, like almost if you have a boat launch type of a situation. So we were able to accommodate that without any problems. I can spend a little time on one of the most complicated aspects of this. I try to get a graphic as smart as I can get. You permit height bonuses based on the setbacks. And what I've tried to do is take a look at the building and get the highest projections. It's a, it's more of a contemporary style building, so we have certain areas of the site that are higher than others, but what we're allowed to do depends on the distance of those features to the property line. So just as a, for instance, the highest element of the structure is a vertical element by the front entrance canopy, which would be 56.4 inches, and the finished grade on the, on the sidewalk at that point is 337.2. Now, the permitted height at that point would be the 40-foot plus. We're 91 feet away from the property line, so that's 51 feet in excess of the 40-foot setback. I get a 50% credit, two-for-one on that, which allows me to have a height at that point of 65.5 feet. We're at 56.4 inches. On the front side, the distance is 104 feet beyond the normal, so I'm able to get a height of 92.2 feet. Obviously, at 56.4 inches, we're well below that. And that, that's probably the, the most extreme circumstance on the site. So it's typical of more of an urban situation where you step back your buildings to create plaza areas and let light get through, that you're allowed to go higher if you get bigger setbacks. So hopefully you could follow that explanation, because it's hard to explain. Ownership of the drainage system. There is a little bit of the drainage in that, in that right-of-way. We're owners of these two catch basins that discharge into this basin here, which the town has easement over. There's, there was a lot of question about who's responsible for cleaning that basin. And what it really did is it redounded either to the town or to the Fairfield Inn. And basically, I think it came down to the fact that the Fairfield Inn is responsible. And I don't know if you have the correspondence, we're copied in. Aaron sent them a notice that they should go clean it. Other than that existing drainage, all of our drainage goes through our own drainage system that we're obviously responsible for. And that was the operations and maintenance plan that was submitted in your package. I'll get back to the landscape plan in a moment, but there's a lot of trees coming onto this site. The lighting photometrics sometime can be a little misleading, because the photometric program doesn't really allow us to put in the trees or those kind of obstacles and what it has as effect. But it does allow vertical elements, and this is a computer-generated nightscape as to really what would be the effect. Again, not counting for tree shadowing and whatnot, but the, the most important thing is, is that we're not migrating over to the Homewood site. I think these things are great. They probably give me an understanding of what it's really gonna be like until you do this for 40 years, and you get surprised every time you walk out onto a site for the first time at night. So what we have here is, we have a lot of existing vegetation along the ridge that's gonna remain, but we've supplemented it with a series of other types of vegetation. We, for shade trees, we've used ginkgos, honey locusts, and a variety of oak sizes. What's starting to happen now is we're starting to really run afoul of what we can use. The ash family was very, very commonly used in parking lots, because they're very drought-resistant, a beautiful form, and they've been wiped out from Ohio through New England by the emerald ash borer, so that's a problem. Maple trees, we're not allowed to use them anymore, because they're invasive. The seed droppings that we used to play with don't know any bounds, so we, we're not using those. We're using, you know, again, mostly oak and honey locusts. We have some, the ginkgos are more vertical, blue atlas cedar, very vertical, architectural type of form to it, which complements the building. A number of flowering trees, the shagloe we're utilizing, the star magnolias, flowering cherry trees, and Korean stewardia. Basically, it's a tree that has the bark of a, of a sycamore, and it has the flowers of a camellia, so it's kind of a nice ornamental tree. Typical shrub plantings, azaleas, different variety of azaleas. Then we use certain types of plant materials around the detention basin that are complementary, red twig, dogwood, spiced bush, button bush. We also bring in some viburnums for fragrance in the plaza areas and whatnot, so things of that nature. And a variety of different kinds of grasses and ground covers. All the, all the landscape areas will be serviced by underground irrigation system. Going back on the landscape plan, I do have snowshells called out on the plans themselves. Biggest problem we usually have is people plant too close to the building and too close to the curb. You gotta, kinda have to be off of both of them. Drainage details, berms, things of that nature. Standard Wallingford Sewer Water Division details are incorporated. And we had to make a modification on the signage to reduce the prototypical entrance signs right by the driveway, make them a little smaller. The A-series plans are the architecturals, different kinds of suites, king suites, queen suites, king studios, double queen, wide suites. We have a small meeting room. Again, this is a suite, extended state type of facility. So sometimes, you know, 10, 15 people need to have a little meeting there. They have a business center, and they have the ability to do that. Small pool, fitness area, and it's a place where you get, we've all gone there, make your own breakfast, bar in the morning there, the waffles and all that good stuff. Again, a contemporary building. It's got brick on the lower levels, a composite vertical siding meant to look like a wood-formed contemporary ethos, and again, a projected architectural element. The canopy is elevated, so you can get a fire emergency vehicle underneath it. And considering the hour, I wanna stop here.
Thank you. And we take it at this point, you've concluded your presentation, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Commission members with any questions for the applicant? Mrs. Han.
Okay, so I, first I wanna thank the applicant and his team for all of their work on this. There was a lot of kinda back and forth getting here. And generally, Mr. Gordon touched on sort of the, kind of the things that I wanted to touch on, so generally those have been addressed, and generally my comments have been addressed. There are some, there were a few things, and a lot of them Mr. Gordon touched on, that were in my comments, where I still think we need to finalize some of the details. But as long as you, as long as the applicant is willing to agree that they'll comply with the regulations in terms of those comments, and comply with the, the comment letter, that I'm comfortable with moving forward. So there are a few things where we're, I think we're most of the way there. I just think we need to hash out a couple of the, the finite details. So, for example, the, the height, and I know, I know you put a lot into that, and that's probably the most complicated one. I, I think that I can agree with you that there's compliance. I just think I would have, I, I think some of our numbers for average grade would be a little bit different. So like that, that kinda thing. So nothing that I think is, is would hold up the application.
So at the end of the day, you gentlemen are comfortable with the, the comments that our town planners made?
Yes.
Okay. And then you had conditions from several other departments that also can be made, conditions of approval. And I did include a, a, a recommended condition about compliance with the height, and subvention and control bond to be determined upon the middle of final plans.
Good, thank you. And I just have one quick question. I think I know the answer. As far as this hotel's not going to have any real function rooms. You mentioned it was a small kind of a conference room, but there's no function rooms. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, the reason why I was asking that, because we have, like the Hilton Garden has some large function rooms. And I know you, you'd mentioned you're going to be keeping your parking down, which I think is a benefit. Or there was a, you know, a function at the Hilton Garden where there was an event. And tell you, if I was staying at the hotel, I'd say, where am I gonna park? Because it was, there wasn't any parking, you know, for that particular event. But in this particular case, and that should not be an issue for you.
That's correct.
So unless the applicant has any other questions or comments, I see no commission members with any comments, I'd entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve application 228-19, site plan for Wallingford Lodging Partners LLC to construct a 105-room, 62,122-square-foot hotel at Four Miles Drive, as shown on the plans entitled, Proposed Site Development Plan, Hampton Inn and Suites by Hilton, Four Miles Drive, Wallingford, Connecticut. Submission date, August 30th, 2019. Revised to September 23rd, 2019. Subject to the following conditions. Conditions in inter-office memorandum from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, Water and Sewer, to Aaron O'Hare, Environmental Planner, dated July 15th, 2019, and to Casey Han, Town Planner, dated October 8th, 2019. Compliance with letter from Casey Han, Town Planner, to Jeffrey Gordon, Agent, dated September 19th, 2019, in its entirety, to the acceptance of the Town Planner. Compliance with requirements in interdepartmental referral from Office of the Fire Marshal, dated September 20th, 2019. Compliance with height restrictions, allowances to be verified to the satisfaction of the Town Planner. All information required by the Town Planner to facilitate verification to be provided. Compliance with memo from Vanessa Batista, Chief Sanitarian, dated- Compliance with memo from Vanessa Batista, Chief Sanitarian, dated October 4, 2019, and sedimentation and erosion control bond to be determined by the Town Planner."
Good. We have a motion on application, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, my Mr. Fitzsimmons voting beginning with Mr. Hahn, please.
Yes, to approve.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, the application's been approved, and if you'd just thank your client for deciding to construct a hotel here in Wallingford, I'd appreciate that.
Thank you.
And bringing us now to item number, item number 10, which is a old business item. It's a site plan for a warehouse at Sterling Estates LLC at 3 Sterling Drive. Sorry.
Just increase your billing. I apologize.
And again, Mr. Fitzsimmons, if you would note all correspondence for the record while the applicant's preparing for his presentation.
What number are we at, I'm sorry?
Eight?
Ten, I think.
Ten. Oh. A memo was sent from, was received from the Department of Engineering, dated September 9, 2018, addressed to the Planning and Zoning Commission. A letter was received from Kevin Grindel, dated September 9, 2019. We also have a comment, an outstanding item summary regarding this application. We also have received correspondence from the Fire Marshal's Office, dated September 5, 2019. We also have a copy of an email from Kevin Grindel to Casey Hean, Town Planner, dated We have a copy of the site plan application comment response summary, addressed to the Town Planner, due August 28, 2019. We also have a copy of a memo from Senior Engineer, Water and Sewer, dated September 4, 2019. We also have a copy of a letter sent from the Office to Sterling Estates, dated August 28, 2019. We have an Interoffice Memorandum to Town Planner from Eric Kruger, Wallingford Water and Sewer, dated July 26, 2019. We have a memo from the Fire Marshal's Office, dated July 17, 2019. We have another memo from the Fire Marshal's Office, dated August 28, 2019. We have a copy of a letter from Kevin Grindel, written, addressed to the Town Planner, dated July 29, 2018. And we have comments from the Engineering Department, addressed to the Commission for the Department of Engineering, dated October 8, 2019. We have comments from the Fire Marshal's Office, dated October 11, 2018. That is all.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. If the applicant would please introduce himself and begin his presentation.
Absolutely. Thank you, Commission. My name is Kevin Grindel, for the record, a landscape architect and associate with Anchor Engineering Services in Glastonbury, Connecticut, here this evening representing Sterling Estates LLC. Their apologies to you, members of Sterling Estates LLC are out of town in relation to the recent Jewish holiday, they will not be returning until the 23rd, so they express their apologies. But I am here this evening to present on their behalf the application at 3 Sterling Drive. I will only be here a moment and then stand up at the board to go through my very brief presentation, and I appreciate being able to say good evening and not having to say good morning to you at this point in the evening. For a very brief overview of the existing property, once again, the Sterling Drive, the address is 3 Sterling Drive, on the corner of Sterling and Barnes Road. The existing property is approximately 12 acres, zoned IX, industrial expansion. Brief history on the property, originally in 1978, there was an OESTA application and subsequent approval for 4,550 parking spaces, so all work on this, on this project is, will be going to the DOT OESTA office for review. Working off of site plans dated 1987, 1988, excuse me, 1998, our firm, Anchor Engineering, did revisions or modifications with the building addition in 2002. Subsequently, there were also revisions done in 2004 by another firm. Our work in 2002 put an expansion on the back of this facility, this is the Quest Diagnostics Building, so that was the expansion at Quest on 2002. The existing building area, footprint-wise, is 62,000 square feet, you will see that in the dark, dark gray on the top of that sheet. The building area and total floor plan area is 95,900 square feet, making up both one and two floors within the existing building. Existing parking on the site, there's approximately three, or there is 383 parking spaces on the site, based upon existing mapping and then field verification by our office counting those spaces, including 12 handicap spaces on the site. What we are proposing at this point is a 35,000-square-foot building addition, shown on the bottom of that page, and in the pink hue on the bottom of the page. What the applicant is proposing to do at this point is, is to construct a 35,000-square-foot one-story warehouse addition on that parcel. They are currently seeking tenants for that 35,000-square-foot warehouse. So in doing so, we do not have building plans or final fit-out of that 35,000 square feet, working with town staff to go through those items, so presenting to you as much information as I and we have at this point, and being very comfortable with any conditions that would be part of that approval, based upon those items that I'm unaware of or can't provide you further detail on, and I can get into some of those very brief details as well. The 35,000-square-foot building addition is primarily within the footprint of the existing parking. We're taking advantage of the fact that there's significantly more parking on that property than the current regulations require. So with that 35,000-square-foot warehouse addition, including the existing building areas, we have the opportunity to reduce the parking to a total of 316 parking spaces, including eight handicap spaces, so that, we're taking advantage of a parking reduction, offsetting the increased building area, so that when we get into the drainage component of this, there's a very minor drainage increase that we're able to mitigate or attenuate on-site, based upon the fact that we had so much pavement to contend with as an existing condition. And at this point... Right. So just for orientation purposes, as I indicated before, this is the existing building area, this is the 35,000-square-foot building addition. Once again, that building addition is being constructed within the paved parking lot, thereby reducing the overall parking areas to 316, as just noted. What you will see on this plan is shaded parking areas to infill the areas to, associated building, if you will, and then modify some areas in regards to some additional handicap spaces. What you will also see is, based upon our field verification of the existing conditions, the existing handicap stalls are not in compliance with today's regulations, today's ADA regulations. As part of this application, we have indicated to town staff that we'll be in a position to modify those existing handicap spaces to bring them into compliance, as well as constructing new handicap spaces adjacent to this proposed addition. You will note on the proposed addition, on the bottom of the page, or the southern part of the site, there is a loading area. The existing building has a truck loading on the existing southern face of the building. What we're looking to do as part of this addition, move that loading area down to be within the proposed warehouse addition. In doing so, in working with town staff in regards to buffers and screening that loading area, I do acknowledge for the record that there is a section referenced that I believe to be Section 4.9 E3 in regards to screening from the road of that loading area. For the record, we are comfortable with the screening requirements in that section, acknowledging that that loading area is in the front and side yard of the property. So for overall purposes, you will notice that the parking here in shade, as well as the loading area, has been revised. What I will also give you for orientation is that on this plan, I have highlighted the proposed drainage revisions that will be required to handle the stormwater associated with these improvements, and there being a small detention basin in the rear of this building, primarily to handle the roof water on this, on this building, and like I said, there's a small attenuation for increased runoff, and that will also be handled on that detention basin to the rear and discharged into the existing drainage on-site. Working with town staff, with planning and with engineering, I spoke with Engineering Department yesterday, I am in receipt of the most recent comments, I feel confident that all those comments can be handled based upon, based upon my conversations with Rob, that those comments could be conditions that we would be comfortable with moving forward with. In regards to housekeeping items, one conversation I've, or an ongoing conversation I've had with planning is in regards to bringing the other areas of the site up to compliance, as indicated, the handicap stalls would be one of them. Another talking point that we've had has been the existing onsite landscaping, both the buffer trees or the street trees along Barnes and Sterling, as well as the interior landscaping trees. So I'm confident and comfortable to say to you this evening that on the plans, we are showing proposed trees along to bring this, along both Sterling and Barnes, to bring this site up to current compliance and infill where needed to achieve the one tree per 50-foot frontage, along the frontage requirements. Understanding that, once again, we are in an OESTA permit anyhow, we will be applying for administrative decision subsequent to this application, the client is aware of that. The building plans as well, based upon the fact that there is not a fit-out of this warehouse, like I said before, the building plans have not been submitted, we're confident in saying that once, once those have been finalized, those plans will be submitted for review prior to, prior to the building permit application, to make sure we're in compliance with all town requirements, and acknowledging that if there's any changes to the plans, we are also comfortable in the realization that any significant changes to the plans would put us back in front of this commission, based upon that warehouse One talking point would be the dumpsters that we've been discussing with planning. The dumpster is adjacent to the loading area contained within the building, acknowledging that dumpster location cannot be within the front yard, thereby it will be contained interior to the building, and the client is aware of that requirement. Loading docks, I've indicated, stormwater, once again, conversations with the town engineer, I'm confident in the stormwater being compliant. The interior landscaping, buffer plants, as indicated, and acknowledging that the water and sewer comments as received by conditions of approval, we are, we are comfortable with all conditions that he's, that he's put on the record. So forgive me, I am abbreviating some of my, some of my presentations, so I will conclude at this point, but would be happy to go back through any of the details and further explanation if you'd like me to.
Don't ask for forgiveness to be brief. Commission members with any comments for the applicant?
Just hopefully, a quick question. I was just wondering, I assume the warehouse is going to be storing, you know, blood drawing equipment, things like that?
The warehouse use, I'm still working with a tenant, I do not have the commitment of what that warehouse would be storing, but I will put on the record that whatever it's storing will be consistent with both Fire Marshal, Engineering, and Planning requirements, but I would be happy to have any restrictions placed on that statement as need be.
I'm good.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Yeah, it's not an extension of the existing facility, it's a separate.
Yep. I see, I see that, yeah.
Any other commission members with questions? Mrs. Hahn, any final comments that you'd like to make?
Just briefly, the, I did speak with Engineering today, and they were comfortable with their comments being made, conditions of approval. You have my, we had gone back and forth a few times, several times, about updating plans and kind of getting my comments addressed, so the majority of those are addressed, and then you have, from the last meeting, what I called the outstanding item summary, a lot of those have been addressed to already at this point, but you can just make that a condition of approval. The, this survey, so this wasn't actually based on an A2 survey, so the commission just needs to decide whether that's acceptable to you. It was based on some previous, previous surveys and then some, but it wasn't updated as to current existing conditions, but as discussed, the existing conditions were mostly field verified, so I don't have any objection to that. And then, as Mr. Grindel alluded to, there are some, we don't have, for example, architectural plans, they're not required because it's a site plan, also, without a tenant, it's definitely, they can't really provide architectural plans at this point. And then, there were a few minor landscaping, lighting, and HVAC kind of things to be shown on final plans. The one question I have is screening for the loading area, do you have something you're proposing at this point? I would recommend a row of evergreens, that's, that's what I would, I mean, maybe just arbor byde or something, but if you, I don't, do you know what?
I would absolutely agree as far as the evergreens. My proposal would be maybe, you know, scattered, you know, a few white pines, maybe a dog fir, maybe a Colorado spruce, something that is less, less deer-friendly and more, maybe a little faster growing and more substantial once, once mature, but that's something that I would put on the record to say, it would be more, it would be more of a full-size tree, if you will, native if possible, and that would be, that would be installed consistent with the existing evergreens adjacent. There's a low-growing hedge row of evergreens along that hillside, I would propose, once again, the pines, the spruces, or the dog firs behind that row so that they could grow in together.
Okay. And then, the other thing which I may have missed, but, and we discussed this, once the building fit-out is decided, there will need to be a decision about where access is provided into the building addition, and there was a question raised by Engineering in terms of ADA compliance to, from the parking lot to those accessways, so the recommended condition is that site and building to be compliant with all ADA requirements, any significant changes to site after approval will necessitate a revision to the approval.
Thank you. And just to follow up on Mrs. Hahn's question, as far as the A2 survey, does anyone have any objection? I think we're set with that. So at this particular point in time, unless the applicant has any other comments, and I know he wants to be brief, so we'll let him, unless any commission members have any questions, additional questions for the applicant, I'd entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve application 224-19, site plan for Sterling Estates LLC to construct a 35,000-square-foot warehouse addition to the existing building and make associated site improvements at 3 Sterling Drive as shown on plans entitled, "Site Plan Submission of Building Addition, 3 Sterling Drive, Wallingford, Connecticut, dated July 26, 2019, revised to September 26, 2019. Subject to the following conditions of approval: Compliance with remaining items listed in Outstanding Item Summary in response to Comment Response Summary; Compliance with requirements in interdepartmental referral from the Office of the Fire Marshal, dated July 16, 2019, and August 27, 2019, and dated received September 9, 2019. Interoffice Memorandum from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, Water and Sewer, dated July 26, 2019. Conditions of approval in memorandum from Department of Engineering dated October 8, 2019. Loading docks to be screened as discussed on the record tonight. Screening to be approved by Town Planner reflected on final plans. Site and building to be compliant with all ADA requirements. Any significant changes to site after approval will necessitate a revision application to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Sedimentation and erosion controls that are acceptable to the Town Planner to be shown on final plans. Sedimentation and erosion control bond to be determined by the Town Planner. And trees to be determined by applicant and Town Planner.
Thank you. We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Heinz, please.
Yes, to approve.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, the application's been approved. Have a good evening, sir.
Thank you, motion.
Have a good morning.
I can tell.
And it brings us up to our next item on the agenda, which is item number eight. And again, I apologize to the applicant for jumping over it. It's a site plan manufacturing facility expansion at Protronics Investment Properties at 28 Parker Street. And again, Mr. Fitzsimmons, if you would note all the correspondence for the record while the applicant's getting ready to make his presentation this morning.
A letter was sent from the Planning and Zoning Office to Protronics on September 27, 2019. A fire marshal sent a memo dated September 11, 2019. Received comments from the Department of Engineering on October 7, 2019. A letter was received from Giuliano Associates dated October 7, 2019. We also have a overview of the storm water maintenance plan dated October 2 from Giuliano Associates. And finally, we have updated comments from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, Water and Sewer, dated October 11, 2019. Oh, and we have an updated comments, sorry, that's ours. Is it that one? An updated comments received October 15 from Eric Kruger, Water and Sewer. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. And again, if the applicant's representative would please introduce himself and begin his presentation.
For the record, my name is Christopher Giuliano, licensed land surveyor and professional engineer with the firm Giuliano Associates, maintaining office at 405 Main Street in the Yaleslo section of town. I'm here tonight representing Protronics Property Investments with respect to expansion of their facility at 28 Parker Street. Little background about the facility, they are manufacturers of circuit boards. So they are looking to expand because they have new equipment, they want a little bit more elbow room. So they're proposing to put a 990 square foot addition, basically 22 by 40, on the backside of the building. Given the odd shape and small size of the property, it's located in a CB40 zone and it's just under a half acre, they had to go to the zoning board of appeals to obtain variances for side yard and rear side yard and rear yard setback. They obtained both those variances, otherwise I wouldn't be here tonight. As the correspondence from Mrs. Hand points out, this is a rather challenging site due to the non-conforming size, use, the fact that we've just gone through a expansion upgrade of the Amtrak facilities, which also did a taking on Parker Street. So they had a lot of things against them. And the biggest problem, issue was trying to bring this site into compliance with the current regulations, especially with respect to their parking. They had two existing parking lots, one on the west side, one on the east side. Most of the employees, or if not all the employees parked on the west side, but that lot didn't conform at all. In addition, their loading is actually on the front of their building through the easterly parking area. So through the process, working with the planning office, we brought the site into compliance with respect to the parking by relocating the parking on the westerly side to the rear of the building. We have one parallel spot adjacent to the west side of the building. We've actually, where there was really no front yard landscaping at all, we pulled back to 25 feet, which is required. The westerly parking lot, we've reconfigured so that we have a few spots there. Again, it's a challenging site, which we've brought into compliance probably about 95%. I'm not going to claim 100 because I know there are a couple still outstanding issues. We've received comments from Water and Sewer. On the record, there's existing water in sorts of the facility, but the proposed addition is just a, let's call it a dry storage room for equipment. So there's no bathrooms, no sinks, no nothing. So there really is no change to those facilities. The only utility that probably may end up having any change to it is going to be the electric service, just because they're going to have to run service through the building and maybe have to put in a sub-panel or some such for power to that rear portion. With respect to the drainage, the current site drainage is one dry well in the westerly parking lot. We are actually collecting storm water, I'm sorry, in the easterly parking lot. In the westerly parking lot, the water basically flows to the back into the low spot. We're going to continue that drainage pattern, but we're going to put in a second dry well, and that dry well is going to lead to underground galley systems. Now, the town engineer did comment that since we are relying on infiltration, he's a little concerned. I'm not so much concerned because that area is sandy, it's in the quintipiac watershed area, watershed. So the infiltration rates are very high, but I would have no problem talking with Rob and if necessary, increasing that system 25, 50% larger than what's actually required, just so he is comfortable with what we're planning. And we did provide maintenance of the storm water because that is definitely an aspect of this plan that will have to be maintained. He did also raise the question that if that system backs up, will water flow onto neighboring properties? My answer to that is no, because it is kind of in the low spot on the property and our catch basin grate or dry well grate is actually a foot and a half lower than all the surrounding properties. So as I kind of spoke to Mrs. Hand earlier tonight, yesterday, I said if we have a problem in this area where water, so much rain that it's back, it's flowing from this property onto other properties, there are going to be other properties within Wallingford that have bigger problems. So, and then the only other comment from engineering was with respect to the changes to the driveways. Unfortunately, when DOT came through, they created the driveway entrances the way they wanted, really no rhyme, no reason. They're actually very wide, or the easterly ones are very wide, the westerly ones are actually kind of narrow. So we have to bring them into compliance with what's required by zoning regs. So it will require some modification to newly installed improvements, which is a shame, but I really can't do anything but bring it into compliance. Other than that, it's again, it's pretty straightforward from the concept of what they're trying to do, made a little bit difficult because of the tough configuration of the site and nonconformity of the site. So with that, I'll turn it back over to the commission. If you have specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and I know Casey has a few comments, so.
At this point in time, commission members with any questions? Mrs. Hand.
So, yeah, with this site, there are some concerns that I have about, well, let me back up for a minute. So I think kind of maybe the biggest thing, which was the last thing in my comments to you guys, was I overlooked the fact that this is, so this side of the track, the west side of the tracks is an industrial zone, this side of the tracks is this commercial zone. And so this is an expansion of a nonconforming use. It's an existing manufacturing. Now granted, it's storage for that manufacturing for equipment, but it is an expansion of the nonconforming use. That was explained when, or the use was explained when they went before the zoning board of appeals for the variant, the setback variances that were granted, but it wasn't actually part of the variance. So if you do approve this application tonight, it would be, need to be subject to approval of another variance by the zoning board of appeals. It is existing, it's there. The concern that I have is more about the functioning of the site, and I think that's clear in my comments. One of the things that I mentioned several times to Mr. Giuliano and to the property owner is the current regulations don't allow loading to back into, or vehicles to back into or back off of the site, which is what they do now to get into that site. We had this discussion for six research when he was building his facility up there. So that's a concern. And then just kind of the loading in general, that space is really, really tight. If you went by it, it's really tight when you look at it. And I'm a little concerned about the, whoever's doing deliveries and things like that also having to block in that accessible space, which we had talked about to some degree. So that's kind of my biggest concern. Engineering did reiterate to me today when I spoke with, or now our public work director, the comment about the area in the back. So I don't know if you want to have a condition, I mean, presumably you could make those comments, conditions of approval from Mr. Baltramidis. And so each of his comments would have to be addressed to his satisfaction, and if they can't be, then either something would have to come back, or the project wouldn't be able to move forward. Same thing with comments about his requirement for details for the front driveway, brins and those things. So that's, and the only other thing is, which I don't know if Mr. Giuliano and I have talked about this, the dumpster location. I think right now it's in the front somewhere.
Yep.
And it can't be.
It is in the front of the building on the easterly side.
Yeah.
Beyond the front yard setback, I mean, it's the current location, they, if it's allowed to stay there, it'll be screened. As I, we did talk briefly, I did explain, I did have an alternative that I could move it to the back.
That's right.
So that is a possibility, and I can make that change, I'd be willing to make that change if it's absolutely necessary. In fact, that would probably, moving it to the back would probably facilitate your concern over the dumpster location. Second, it would also facilitate the truck that comes to pick up the refuse where it likely would not have to back up onto Parker Street. Now, the owners, and I'm jumping back to one of Casey's earlier comments, with respect to deliveries, the facility is in the process and has been in the process to eliminating their deliveries by tractor-trailer. They have one vendor that does tractor-trailers. The site's too small for tractor-trailers. So, and they know it's a problem, so they are in the process of eliminating that one vendor and finding a replacement. So really, their deliveries come from FedEx, UPS, and US Mail. Now, they've spoken with both UPS and FedEx, and they've been assured that the vehicle can get in, even if it's a 10-point K turn, they can get in, to back up, and then pull out forward. The only, it only impacts their business. So, you know, they understand that it's not a perfect situation. Now, with respect to when a SU30 vehicle would be backed up to that loading dock, it would block off basically no parking area, two spots which we can definitely designate as employee, and just a small, like three feet of that eight-foot hatched area. So again, not ideal, but the accessible space would still be open, just part of the hatching would, might be blocked. So again, as I said, 95% compliance on the site, and it's not normally the way I want to work, but there are just some things I can't do for a site, and this is one of them. So I'm fine with Rob's comments being conditions of approval as long as the commission is. You did tell me about the variance after the fact, and yeah, we, you know, it was missed. I understand that, you know, no one's, we're not perfect, just like on my previous application, I had to go back for the change. So, you know, if we go back, I don't think it's going to be a problem with respect to ZBA because we already got the two setback variances, but, you know, if they don't get it, the project doesn't move forward, and that's their risk. So I think it's understood, so.
Thank you. Commission members, any comments? Mrs. Hand, any final comments or your?
No, just if any of those, I guess the commission will have to decide if you want to incorporate any of that into conditions of approval. I guess the one that I would at least ask for is that no backing up, I mean, it's already in the regulation, but no backing onto or off of the site. And that if, that there's a provision made so that if someone does need to get out of that accessible space or into that accessible space, access is provided to them.
Loaded on the plan, yeah.
Yeah.
That being said, if there's no questions from commission members, I'd entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve application 231-19, Site Plan for Protronics Investment Properties, to construct a 990 square foot addition to the existing building and make associated site improvements at 28 Parker Street as shown on plans entitled, Land of Protonics, Protronics Investment Properties, 28 Parker Street, Wallingford, Connecticut, dated October 8, 2019, revised to October 7, 2019, subject to compliance with requirements in interdepartmental referral from the Office of the Fire Marshal dated September 11, 2019. Compliance with memorandum from Rob Baltramidis, Department of Engineering, dated October 7, 2019. Compliance with letter from Casey Hand, Town Planner, to Protronics Investment Properties, dated September 27, 2019, to the acceptance of the Town Planner. Sedimentation and erosion control bond to be determined by the Town Planner. This approval is dependent upon whether an additional variance by the zoning board of appeals allowing the expansion of the nonconforming use is granted. Inner Office Memorandum from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, Water and Sewer Division, dated October 11, 2019, and that there will be no backing into the property and the accessible space must be available.
Thank you. We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with?
One clarification, do you want to have the dumpster relocated or not?
I think we do.
I offered it, so that's.
Okay. And final plans to show relocation of the dumpster?
Yeah, we have a motion on the application, we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, voting beginning with Mr. Heinz.
Yes, to approve.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, application's been approved.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You too.
Thank you. All right, Mrs. Hand. I guess we have our next item is just an extension of a special permit for Old North Colony Properties LLC, 12 Old North Colony Road. If you could just give us a very brief?
Yes. They are still working with us, they're generally in compliance with the zoning. This is, you gave them a three-month extension three months ago. So at this point, in order to get through the winter and into the spring, I'm recommending a six-month extension. So that would bring you to April 9 of 2019, I mean, of 2020.
We have a recommendation from our Town Planner to extend this for six months. Do we have an application, do we have a motion on that suggestion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve an extension for special permit, Old North Colony Properties LLC, 12 Old Colony Road, to a six-month extension expiring on April 9, 2020.
We have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, all in favor?
Aye.
Approved abstentions, and moving on, Mrs. Hand. Approved abstentions, and moving on, Mrs. Hand?
Administrative approvals, I'll leave it to you if you have any questions.
Anyone, any questions on administrative approvals? And we'll go to ZBA decisions.
Okay, ZBA decisions, they approved both applications last month, one for the daycare you approved tonight on 3 Technology, and one was for a garage. There is no meeting this month because there weren't any applications. And then zoning enforcement log, you have some items closed. I know last month, the issue of the cemetery was discussed, and the commission asked for, requested a timeline. What was conveyed to me is that there is, there is motion, there is forward motion on this, the town attorney has now gotten involved, so that was sort of explained to me why they don't, why there's not a specific timeline in place, but she has gotten involved and made, assures me it's a priority for her. They, there's some conversation being had, and it is, I'm, it's, what was explained to me is that it is positive, it is moving forward, but there is conversation being had with the consultant that worked on behalf of the town, and that's kind of where, where they are.
Anyone with any other questions or any questions on the ZBA, or zoning enforcement log? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
We have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed abstentions, we're adjourned.